Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's July 7, 2022, open meeting. First, Ms. Costa, can you please take the roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Cozart?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo?
Here.
Thank you. Chair White?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Mendelson?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis, I believe is not present today, and Commissioner Ginsburg?
Here.
Marcel Acosta, the Executive Director, Anne Skyler, General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, Urban Design and Plan Review, are also in today's meeting.
Thank you. Noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is livestreamed and will be available in the next few days as a video on NCPC's website. At this time, we will play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and every liberty and justice for all.
NCPC's offices are currently under renovation, so NCPC will continue to conduct its meetings online until this work is complete. We also are continuing to monitor public health requirements for in-person gatherings. I'd like to share how we will be conducting commission business during commission deliberations. I will use a round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have any comments. As a reminder, during deliberations, all commissioners should be on video during that time unless you are experiencing technical issues. At other times, when commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute and ask to be recognized. Next is Agenda Item 2, which is the Report of the Chair. I'd like to report that during June, the commissioners had field trips to Arlington National Cemetery, Joint Base Meyer-Henderson Hall, and Union Station to learn more about the plans and projects we will be reviewing. And I'd like to thank the respective teams that provided these tours because they are invaluable for the commission to understand the on-the-ground context for often complex proposals. On June 6, Executive Director Acosta and I had the opportunity to meet with Nina Albert, GSA's Public Buildings Commissioner, to discuss projects of mutual interest to our agencies. Next is Agenda Item 3, which is the Report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Chair White, and good afternoon. NCPC recently received a Commuter Connections 2022 Employer Services Organization Award for the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. This achievement award recognized our comprehensive plan transportation element and its impacts on shaping federal and regional transportation choices. Thanks to Joanna McCrayan, Cale Anderson, and Michael Wile for their excellent work. We also welcome our new Director of Administration, Tamara Lewis. Tamara joins us for the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's National Weather Service. Noah Tamara held Senior Administrative and Budget Officer positions. Tamara holds a Master's in Social Work for Howard University and is pursuing a second Master's degree in project management at Georgetown University. Welcome aboard, Tamara. And if you could just turn on your camera. There you go. Welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you, Director Acosta, and congratulations on the recognition for the great work. And welcome, Ms. Lewis. We look forward to working with you as you've joined our team. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any questions for Mr. Acosta? Hearing none, we will move to Agenda Item 4, which is Legislative Update. We'll be hearing from Ms. Skyler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do, in fact, have a brief report today. Last month, I reported to you on Bill HR 3525. This bill establishes a commission to report and recommend a plan of action for establishing and maintaining a National Museum of Asian American History and Culture. At my last report, I advised that it had passed both the House and the Senate, but had yet to be signed by the President. Well, the bill was signed by the President on June 13, and it is now public law, so we can look forward to a new museum in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skyler. Does the commission have any questions for Ms. Skyler? Hearing none, our next agenda item is number 5, which is the Consent Calendar. There are two items on this month's consent calendar. The first is for approval of a preliminary site development plan for an infrastructure project at the Foreign Mission Center in Washington, DC. This project was submitted by the Department of State. The second item is for approval of preliminary site development plans for a new design for Cobb Park, located at 208th Street Northwest. This was submitted by the DC Department of General Services. Are there any questions or discussion on the consent calendar items? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. I heard a second, I believe, from Commissioner Dixon. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion in the second and take the vote by roll call?
Certainly. The motion was made by Commissioner Wright, and the second was provided by Commissioner Dixon. With that, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendelson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is carried. Agenda Item 6A is a request to approve comments on revised concept plans for the Washington Union Station Expansion Project. And we will be hearing first from Mr. Fless. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hopefully, you can see my screen. The Federal Railroad Administration has submitted revised concept plans for the Washington Union Station Expansion Project, which you last reviewed back in 2020. The project proponents include Amtrak, as well as the Union Station Redevelopment Corporation, or USRC. So this is a concept review. The commission is providing general comments on the general project approach, including reviewing the project for consistency with the comprehensive plan and identifying planning issues to be addressed prior to the next review. As a reminder, this review is focused on the project, which is located on federal land, for which NCPC has approval authority. You'll also hear both through my discussion, presentation, as well as later testimony about the private air rights development, which is located nearby. This is a project that's subject to local zoning and a separate district review process. So just as a reminder, here you can see Washington Union Station. I think everybody is familiar with the location north of the US Capitol, highlighted here in yellow. Washington Union Station is the second busiest station in the Amtrak network. It includes high-speed Acela service, as well as the Northeast Regional Service. VRE and Mark also serve the station, as well as local and regional bus. So USRC oversees the station operations. This includes maintaining the station as a multimodal transportation center, as well as enhancing the retail amenities within the station. You'll recall that this is a very complex site. It includes the historic station here, as well as an existing bus facility and parking garage. You can see here, these are located on federal land, which was highlighted in yellow, and maintained by USRC. There are other important owners in the area, including Amtrak, which controls the tracks, Womada, which controls the Metro Rail Station, the Park Service, as well as Accridge, which is a private air rights owner, which controls these areas that are hatched above the tracks. So moving to the expansion project itself, before pre-pandemic, the station saw about 40 million visitors a year, and the project proponents are still anticipating significant growth through 2040, and hence the need for the project. The major components include reconfiguration of the station tracks, a new train hall, bus facilities, and parking facilities. Other components include new concourses, as well as support spaces, pedestrian and bicycle improvements, as well as new pickup and drop-off areas, or puto, for vehicles. You'll recall back in 2020 that the biggest components of this project are the parking, the bus facility, and the train hall. So just going back to 2020, this was the original preferred alternative. This included a new east-west train hall, highlighted here in blue. The historic station is retained here at the front, as well as a new bus facility here in purple, and parking above, which is kind of in a tan color. This facility, again, was above the tracks, located in relatively close proximity to the current facility today. So this is from back in 2020. So when you reviewed the project, a concept review back then, and later during the EIS process, you expressed a number of concerns and provided comments on a few key areas. Overall, you did express support for the transportation improvements, but asked that the parking be reduced substantially. You also found that the overall urban design approach, particularly the layout, did not seem to provide a quality experience for users. And then you also found that additional coordination was necessary, particularly with the district agencies, as well as that private air rights owner, to address some of these issues. So given all these comments, as well as those that were received through the EIS process, the FRA has been working closely with a number of stakeholders, including the district and Accridge, to revise the project layout. So this is moving on to the revised concept. As I mentioned, back in May with the informational briefing, there are basically a few big changes that have occurred since your last review. These include changes to the parking location, a reduction in the parking program, and a reconfigured bus facility and pickup and drop-off area as well. The new east-west train hall is essentially retained in the same location which you saw before, and this is right behind the historic station. However, the other moves, including moving the parking and the bus facility, essentially free up the deck level behind the station for some future air rights development, which we'll talk a little bit about later. So as I talk about the project, I think it's probably most helpful to use this image to start. This is a section through the train hall and some of the other components, like the bus facility, looking towards the west, essentially. I'm going to start at the lowest level and then work my way up through the projects. And so much of this is happening sectionally. It's really important to see that. So first, in terms of the big changes, the parking has been moved underground. Here you can see that. That's a level below the concourse level. So again, it's moving it from that structure above the tracks down below the station. Secondly, the parking program, which includes pickup and drop-off, as well as rental spaces, has been reduced substantially, almost 50% from 1,600 spaces to around 860 spaces. This is down from over 2,000 spaces in the station today. So the location of that parking area below the tracks and concourses, as well as the pickup and drop-off area, does require some ramps to get access to it. The proposed design has identified a few locations, including the east ramp, the first street entrance, and then a potential ramp on G Street. Design of these ramps is going to continue through the design process. The vehicular circulation will also be analyzed as part of updated environmental review. I do want to point out that the ramp in G Street will require particular attention. It's located in the middle of the right-of-way, and we request further details about the design of this element and also its operation, and also request that the applicant coordinate with the adjacent landholders, particularly the Smithsonian Institution, which controls the property of the south as this element is further designed moving forward. So moving up to the next level, this is above the parking. This is the concourse level. This is similar to what you saw in 2020. A new H Street concourse is going to be, is provided here, linking east to west. This is essentially under the Popscotch Bridge area. This will bring passengers closer to the trains at this end of the station, so no longer just from the historic train hall. There will also be new concourses connecting from north to south. This layout also includes access and incorporates the new Womada First Street Entrance, which is a project reviewed several years ago. Womada has said that they will be moving forward with that entrance improvement and that they will need to continue to coordinate that project with the station project moving into the future. So just here's a rendering of the new concourses. Again, these are happening below the track level. You can see in this rendering the train tracks, which are located just above. Again, this provides opportunities for connectivity, but again, it brings the passengers closer to the trains in a few locations for that easier access. Here's a rendering of just the first street entrance to the H Street concourse. Again, this is providing an additional entry point, both from the Noma neighborhood side, as well as Capitol Hill. And I believe in your information, you've received testimony and comment from both of those neighborhoods regarding their support for the project. So above the concourse level is the track level. These are new and modernized tracks, as well as platforms to meet both accessibility and future growth needs. These have not substantially changed since what you saw back in 2020. And then moving up again, this is another area of a substantial change. This is the new bus facility, which has been, again, relocated from the kind of parking garage area to a new east-west alignment that better integrates with the train hall. This single level is located at the deck level and provides access from H Street with about 38 or 39 potential bus slips. This would accommodate both inner-city, as well as tour and charter bus activity. Local buses, including Womada buses, would likely still begin, be circulating at the street level just to provide that better passenger service. But again, the access for this facility is provided from H Street, which allows for full movement for bus service. Here you can just see a plan view of the new bus facility. Again, it's adjacent to the train hall. We'll note that there is, because of this new proximity, there's a better direct intermodal connection between the bus facility, the train hall, and the concourses below. And therefore, we do find the proposed location of this new bus facility provides a more direct connection to the train hall, the station platforms, as well as the new pickup and drop-off facility, which is above it, and I'll talk about in a second. We do find that the placement of this facility at the top level also emphasizes the equitable standing of this mode of transportation and also provides an opportunity for daylighting to help really improve that user experience. So here's just a rendering of the new bus facility. Modernization of the facility will certainly be a benefit, but it will require continued coordination. And so as the project is further developed, the details are developed, we do recommend the applicant continue to work with the bus operators and other related stakeholders regarding the new bus facility operations, as well as opportunities for future vehicle charging stations, thinking about future electrification. And so here's a rendering of the new train hall. Again, this is going to provide both a gathering space, but also a connector between the modes of transportation. So in this view, you can actually see the station, the tracks and the trains at this level, the bus facility here, and then I'll talk about the top here, the new pickup and drop-off area. So again, moving up to the top level, this is where there is incorporated a new pickup and drop-off area. This would be, again, access from H Street. This is in addition to pickup and drop-off, both at the front of the historic station, as well as in the parking level that I talked about earlier. The intention with this, again, is to help distribute that access from several to several locations around the station. And so it brings the passengers closer to different modes. So at this level, you're closest to the bus facility, and it gives you, again, more opportunities for access. So here's just a view of the deck level with the pickup and drop-off facility. And from here, you would be able to circulate down to the buses, as well as the trains and concourses, which are below you. So at this level, there's also a proposed new central open space. This would link the pickup-drop-off area with H Street. It includes new skylights, which would help daylight the concourses below, as well as a new headhouse to provide some vertical circulation down to the concourses and tracks. The remainder of this that you see are just essentially illustrative footprints that show how potential air rights could be developed in the future. So as I mentioned, with the relocation of the parking and the reconfiguration of the bus facility, essentially frees up this area for future air rights development. I'll note that portions of this area, particularly this side, are controlled by the private air rights developer. And as such, additional coordination will be necessary between the project proponents and Accridge as these kind of elements are further developed. So here's just a rendering. This is looking from H Street to the south, towards the station here in the distance. This new central open space appears to be an improvement from the previous concept. It does provide both that visual and physical link between H Street and the station. And we recognize that the details of this space still need to be developed, but it will be important to understand how this component will be implemented or phased, if by the air rights developer, by UC, or USRC, or a combination of others, and how the public access will be managed. And so we do request that the applicant provide as part of the next submission additional details about the operation, maintenance of this open space, as well as how the space will be phased in relationship to the rest of the expansion project. Just in addition to freeing up the deck level, as I mentioned earlier, for this better urban design approach, the relocation of the bus facility also establishes a more, a larger effective setback from the historic station to the future air rights development. This setback has been increased about 45, 40 to 45 feet, which we do find could help provide that additional visual separation between the historic station. We do find that the increased setback may help minimize impacts to the views of the historic station, which you'll recall was one of our considerations back in 2020, particularly as you look from Columbus Circle, the open space in front of the station, and some of the radiating streets that look towards the station. The applicant has said that they will be preparing additional viewshed analysis as part of the Section 106 process to help better understand these changes. And then finally, another new project component is the creation of a west ramp. Here you can see in the distance, this would connect from the front of the station up to the H Street level. It would be used primarily for bicyclists and pedestrians, but could also be used for pedestrians or for vehicles at some times. In general, we support the use of the ramp for pedestrian and bicycle use. But for the next submission, it would be helpful to better understand the actual design of this element, particularly to understand the circulation of pedestrians and bicyclists, as well as to understand the conditions during which the ramp could function for vehicular use. So, and just as I wrap up here, staff does appreciate the revised concepts responsiveness to the previous comments. As the project design advances, it may be helpful to remember that the really, the central importance of the historic station building itself, including the train hall, is the focal point of the entire facility. It should continue to retain its role as the primary entrance, and the activity and vibrancy of its public spaces should be, should continue to be enhanced. As such, we advise that through both architecture and programming, the historic station should retain its role as the symbolic and functional center of the larger multimodal facility, as well as a gateway to the nation's capital. Related to this, staff finds that the proposed expansion project architecture should not try to emulate the historic train station. And therefore, we do support a contemporary architectural design approach for the expansion project that is distinct but compatible with the historic station. So since 2020, the project proponents have worked together with a number of stakeholders, including the private air rights developer, to address NCPC comments, as well as other comments received through the environmental and historic preservation review process. Overall, we find that the revised design is very responsive to those comments and concerns, and we recommend the commission express support for the revised concept, particularly the parking program reduction and relocation, as well as the reconfiguration of the bus facility, along with other improvements to access and urban design. While the project will continue to be developed and refined as the process advances, we also want to recommend commending the applicant for developing this new plan that substantially responds to previous comments, particularly those regarding parking, urban design, and coordination. I will just end by saying that this is a large, complex project. It will return for additional reviews before the commission. And we do request that the applicant continue to work with the district agencies, federal, other federal partners, as well as the stakeholders, some of which, some of whom you will hear from today. And so with that, I've already gone through the rest of the recommendations. I'm going to now turn it over to David Valenstein with FRA, who will provide some brief remarks, as well as introduce representatives from USRC and Amtrak. That will be followed by a short animation of the expansion project. Immediately after that, representatives from Accridge will provide remarks about the Burnham Place project, also followed by a short animation. And they will conclude with a few slides, just talking about their project and the planning work, how their planning and design work intersects with the expansion project. And then, of course, after that, we'll move into additional public testimony. So with that, I will now turn it over to David Valenstein with FRA.
Thank you, Matthew, and good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is David Valenstein. I'm a senior advisor with the Federal Railroad Administration. I've led FRA's engagement on this project since the public process began in 2015. We appreciate the opportunity to provide some remarks and context from the applicant's and project proponents' perspective. Commission comments from 2020 and those received on the draft EIS statement have informed steps to refine project design and develop their revised alternative. Many of the comments requested further consideration of the scale and placement of the parking garage, the volume and location of pickup and drop-off functions, and coordination of the station expansion project with adjacent private air rights development. It was clear at that time that project changes were necessary. The revised alternative being presented today is a reflection of this, of stakeholder feedback, including the commission's feedback and coordination among project teams that I will detail in a moment. Turning to the process of discovery for this revised alternative, it reflects extensive collaboration and engagement with stakeholders and among the project team in those. In embarking on collaboration, FRA was guided by two primary design refinement objectives: to find a below-grade solution with good ramp access to accommodate vehicle functions; and second, to achieve a one-level bus facility of sufficient size and good ramp access that is well-integrated with the station. Additionally, a foundational objective of the station expansion project is the preservation of the end-use of the historic building that will remain the primary hub for passenger amenities and front door to the station. Another foundational objective is to integrate the station expansion project with adjacent neighborhoods, businesses, and planned land uses. During 2021, FRA brought the proponents, together with the private air rights developer, to find a solution that meets objectives both the station expansion project and the air rights development above it. The balance achieved is a testament to the effective coordination among the project teams for separate projects. While well-coordinated, the station expansion and air rights development remain two projects, funded separately, and each subject to their own regulatory framework and approvals. The revised alternative reflects the many months that FRA and proponents have spent engaging stakeholders, including bus representatives and District Department of Transportation and other members of the district government. The essential needs and requirements of stakeholders have been met. FRA will shortly resume NEPA and the Section 106 processes that were paused in 2020. FRA will prepare and host an additional public hearing on a supplemental draft EIS in the first half of 2023. The environmental review process will provide the public and agencies with further comment opportunities on the revised alternative. I am confident that the revised alternative provides the station expansion project with a solid footing on which to build a successful future for this critical transportation facility. I thank the commission members for your engagement today. The proponents would now speak about their steps that they took to advance the revised alternative and how it advances their organization's missions and goals. I'll first introduce Kevin Forma from USRC. We'll speak for that organization.
All right. Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kevin Forma. I am the Second Century Program Manager for Union Station Development Corporation, or USRC. As many of you are aware, USRC manages and operates Washington Union Station on behalf of the federal government. I'd first like to thank all the commissioners and the staff for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'd first like to thank all the commissioners and the staff for the opportunity to speak to you today regarding the Washington Union Station expansion project. USRC is one of the project proponents, along with Amtrak. Worked with the, worked with FRA to develop the potential revised alternative you saw here today. To address the public comments that were received following the re-release of the draft environmental impact statement in June twenty twenty. And through our close collaboration with stakeholders, including the private developer, Acridge, the intercity bus carriers, the Guild of Professional Tour Guides. And the district, we were able to reimagine the project. By moving beyond the constraints of the existing property lines. And shift the focus to the importance of Washington Union Station as a regional transportation hub. This also allowed the station expansion project to provide increased focus. On the quality of the urban design while still recognizing and respecting the relationship with the adjacent air rights development. As a public transportation project, our primary focus was on expansion that manages the anticipated growth. And improves the passenger and visitor, visitor experience for all travelers. Regardless of what mode they may depart from or arrive to Washington DC. Over the past two years and through numerous meetings, USRC and the station expansion team. Have worked extensively with all stakeholders to create a design and program that we believe is a great foundation for the future of the station. To further advance and refine the new alternative. USRC drew from its unique relationship with the bus carriers and led an effort to ref- refine the bus facility. The process included many meetings and additional analysis to involve and improve the program we shared here today. Program, we believe, is based on the best currently available information and is designed to meet the future needs of the station. Moving forward, USRC and the project team will continue to engage the carriers throughout the remaining planning. Design and implementation of the project. To further refine the plans for the facility and ensure the best deck will continue to meet the needs of the carriers. The new train concourse will provide the necessary space to expand the capacity of the station. While being thoughtful and mindful of the historic significance of the existing station. The new bus facility, to paraphrase the comments we received from the Commission of Fine Arts. Is highly responsive by including the bus station in the development as a bright and dignified convenience for travelers. The new rail facility will provide the additional capacity necessary for the future growth of Amtrak, Mark and V R E. And the new passenger concourses will provide new amenities for travelers and visitors. While enhancing connections to metro rail, streetcar, local buses and H Street. The project will also reestablish connections with the surrounding neighborhoods of No Man Capitol Hill via the H Street concourse. All of these important upgrades are being accomplished while maintaining the primacy. And historic significance of the existing station building. While the expansion provides new access points to the station. USRC is keenly focused on keeping the historic station as an active and vibrant part of the overall multimodal complex. Given the significant increase in transit and development activity. We anticipate this, the historic station will remain active by facilitating over fifty percent of the future passenger demand. This happens greater than the total volumes we, we see today. We anticipate the historic station will be continued to be enjoyed. By the traveling public and visitors alike for generations to come. This project will be a once in a lifetime opportunity to significantly upgrade the station's capacity for that century. And to provide equitable access to the station for all members of the traveling public. USRC looks forward to continuing to work with the partners to advance and refine this alternative as the process continues. Thank you for your time. And I believe I am turning us back over to David to introduce our next proponent.
Thank you, Kevin. I would now like to introduce Dan Sporick, who is speaking on behalf of Amtrak, also a project proponent.
Thank you, David, and good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Dan Sporick and I'm the director of portfolio management for Amtrak's capital investments at Washington Union Station. And as Amtrak is a project proponent, I appreciate the opportunity to provide some commentary on the Washington Union Station expansion project. As previously mentioned, Washington Union Station is the second busiest station in Amtrak's national network. And it's the nexus of multiple lines of rail service. All of which have considerable growth planned in the coming years. The station expansion project will contribute significantly to the transformation of Amtrak and intercity rail in America. It is consistent with Amtrak's goals of modernizing its assets and working together with our state and local partners, as well as FRA, the United States Department of Transportation. To expand our route network. Station expansion project will result in the full reconstruction of tracks and platforms. This will not only create a more efficient and effective rail terminal. But will also provide for the tremendous growth that is planned along the northeast corridor and national network. While the overall number of tracks and platforms, the overall number of tracks will be reduced. The project will allow for more than double the number of rail passengers and trains that we experience today for both Amtrak and our commuter rail partners. By both lengthening and widening the platforms, operational efficiencies can be captured. To accommodate more trains and quicker turn times. Additionally, the project will provide new concourses and passenger access for easier connections. More circulation space and an overall enhanced passenger experience. Finally, the multimodal nature of the improvements will provide increased connectivity to other modes. Such as metro rail, streetcar, ride share, bike and buses. Amtrak is encouraged and supportive of the work that has been undertaken by the full team. Over the last year and a half to refine the station expansion project and believes the project is poised for success going forward. Amtrak looks forward to working with all parties to continue moving the station expansion project forward. Thank you for your time today, and I'll turn it back over to Dave.
Thank you, Dan. It's my pleasure now to introduce our last speaker. With the, the lead design architect, Nico Dando Hennessy.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Nico Dando Hennessy. I'm a principal with Grimshaw. We are the design architects and working in close collaboration with Fire Blue and Bell, BHB and AARP. Our joint design team to prepare this new concept for the station expansion project. Gives us great pleasure to have worked on this new concept. And we're pleased today to be able to share some additional information. We'd like to thank the commission for allowing us to share. This additional information as part of this presentation. It will be a relatively short animation, which is composed of two parts. The first part goes through the basic elements of the project and explains a bit more how they all come together. And the second part of the animation provides some initial sense of how all the different spaces will come together. To form a new expanded union station for the future. And with that, I believe we will play the animation from the NCPC computers. And we'll let that roll from this point forward. Thank you. That I'd like to thank the commission again for taking the time. To allow us to share this information, and I believe that concludes the presentation by the station expansion team. And projects, and we will now move on to the separate presentation for the air rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fliss, Mr. Valenstein, Mr. Forma, Mr. Sporick and Mr. Dando Hennessy. Very impressive video that was really helpful to see and experience. So at this point, do the commissioners have any questions before we move on? Hearing none. We have seven people signed up to speak. Our first speaker will be David Tuckman from Acridge. NCPC will separately review Acridge air rights development project as well as this project. The two projects, while distinct, are physically and programmatically linked. So our intent is to make sure we hear from all parties throughout the review proceedings to ensure a fully coordinated outcome. As such, the first speaker will have more time allotted. And Mr. Tuckman, I understand you have some remarks, followed by a short video and presentation from Mark Gillian of Shalom Varanis. So, Mr. Tuckman, we're eager to hear from you.
Hey, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good afternoon. My name is David Tuckman, and I'm a senior vice president at Acridge, a real estate development firm headquartered here in Washington since nineteen seventy-four. Today, I would like to express Acridge's strong support for the FRA's revised concept submission. In the past, we sharply criticized the previous proposal as fundamentally flawed. In contrast, we believe the new planning framework includes station components, open spaces. And circulation elements in optimal sizes and locations. The new concept achieves its principal transportation and policy goals while facilitating high quality urban design. And opportunities for air rights development. While the station expansion and Burnham Place have different approval processes, the two projects will be planned and constructed concurrently. The station master plan will determine the framework for development opportunity, open spaces and circulation routes for Burnham Place. To assist the commission and the public in understanding the urban design and developmental implications of the revised SCP concept. Acridge created materials to show what is conceptually possible for Burnham Place within this framework. While the specific building massing uses and architectural styles depicted in the imagery are not formal proposals. The building sites, roadways and open spaces shown do reflect the parameters set by the SCP. This commission has previously recognized the need for the FRA and Acridge to coordinate carefully. To align visions for our respective projects. I'm pleased to report that from Acridge's perspective, that mission has been accomplished. During the past eighteen months, our teams coordinated intensively and productively. After working personally on these projects for fifteen years. I believe their level of planning, design and engineering complexity are unmatched by any project in our region. In three dimensions, the size and location of each program element must be finely calibrated to its maximum level of efficiency. We set out to develop complementary visions which address stakeholder feedback and concerns. And adhered to these technical constraints. The revised SCP concept and new Burnham Place planning vision you'll see momentarily are the products of this collaboration. We believe the three major revisions, the parking, puto and the bus facility effectively respond to our previous concerns. The revisions open the station's perimeter for pedestrian and bicycle oriented activation. The bus facility size and its location, nearly half of which is on Acridge property. Unify intercity travel services at a train hall of grand proportion. The bus station's position in section is inventive, making it prominent while minimizing the visual and acoustic impacts of buses at grade level. The removal of the deck level garage and reconfiguration of public and private property lines facilitate. A public two block long central space, the opportunity for high quality adjacent development. And buildings and open spaces with appropriate relationships to the historic station building. Burnham Place will comprise a dozen buildings flanking both sides of H Street with parks, plazas and new circulation routes connecting to the station and adjoining neighborhoods. While projects like the wharf and the yards center their focus on the waterfront. Burnham Place will define its identity in relation to Union Station and the neighborhoods that surround it. Acridge believes that the SCP in Burnham Place can and must be symbiotic. Urban design, historic preservation and neighborhood connectivity all must be strategically integrated by the two projects. We think that our planning efforts now underway will yield built forms and spaces between them that are optimized and in harmony. For sixteen years, I lived within walking distance of the station. I cannot recall a single time going to Union Station purely to experience the environment surrounding the building. Our vision in the future is that people will come to this area, not just when they have to travel through the station. But because they choose to experience a caliber of urban development normally associated with great European and Asian stations here in. Thank you for the opportunity, and I'll now turn things over to our lead designer, Mark Gillian, Senior Principal at Shalom Varanis Associates.
Thank you, David. As was noted earlier, we're going to start our presentation by sharing with you today another animation, one that describes aspects of the revised SCP certainly, but focuses in on the Burnham Place project in particular. With, with, part of this will describe opportunities and possibilities for the public-accessible open spaces in and around the air rights buildings, and it's an illustrative vision of what's possible. If you could please roll the video. I hope that video was useful in orienting everyone. Hopefully, the following presentation, which is brief, will help to answer any questions the video may have raised for you. If we could please bring up that presentation. So, the deck that we put together here includes selected pages from the larger package of Burnham Place presentation materials submitted earlier to NCPC, and it's really intended to give you all a succinct and high-level overview overview of Burnham Place, and importantly, to describe its complementary relationship to the revised SCP. Next, please. So, the site area is large, covering roughly twenty acres, and its location is prominent. It's situated directly behind Historic Union Station, and the public and private projects will together reinforce an edge of the federal city, an edge that was envisioned with the Macmillan Plan. It's also important to note that the site extends into, it is embraced by flanking DC neighborhoods. Next, please. So, you know, there are some really amazing precedents for integrated transportation in the development projects. Some are shown here. Among the things that we've gleaned from looking at projects like these from around the world is that, you know, with the planning framework that is complementary and coordinated between station and neighborhood projects, harmonized and successful projects result. Through integrated planning, the whole should be greater than the sum of its parts. Next, please. Development of this site will serve important federal, city, and neighborhood interests. It will complement the gateway to DC that is Historic Union Station. It will also offer an incredible opportunity, an opportunity to stitch together neighborhoods, neighborhoods that have been long separated by the elevated rail yard. Next, please. The air rights development, sitting directly above the SCP, requires vertical integration. It's really fundamental to the two projects. At the level labeled here in this axonometric drawing as train hall, deck, and bus facility, horizontal integration is required at that level. So, over the past year and a half, as mentioned, the revised SDP and Burnham Place visions have been carefully coordinated to work to that, towards that integration. Next, please. So, this is a diagram of that train hall, deck, and bus facility levels, sort of a composite. But it describes the SCP program of circulation components that establish the fundamental aspects, certain fundamental aspects of air rights planning framework. Those components are shown here, and they include the train hall, the bus facility, the skylight zone over the central concourse, a new station entrance on H Street, and a circulation loop for station pickup and drop-off for cars and buses. You can see that the bus and station puto, pick-up and drop-off functions, run from H Street to the bus station and the train hall respectively. Buses will enter on the East Service Road up against Station Place and exit to the West. Station puto vehicles enter from the West, ramp up and above that bus facility, and then back down on the east side to H Street. Next, please. Air right circulation can build on that perimeter circulation that's established by the SCP, utilizing that same loop south of H Street and extending it to the north side of H Street. Along with that loop, the introduction of central roadways through the center spaces provide important access to the front doors to air rights buildings. The loop and the central roadways together create a functional circulation network for the projects. Next, please. So, this, the diagram demonstrates that we're not just thinking about cars. In addition to providing for vehicular access and circulation, the SCP framework enables critically important pedestrian and bicycle access up to and at the air rights deck level. For example, as a result of the SCP modifications around that west edge, the west ramp, which of course runs parallel to First Street, pedestrian and bicycle access is enabled between Columbus Circle up to H Street, providing an important connection, particularly for bikes up to Burnham Place and the air rights development. Next, please. The SCP framework also provides for open spaces south of H Street. Those spaces can be linked to additional spaces north of H Street, creating a connected, rich, and diverse open space network. An open space network that's embraced and framed by air rights development sites. Next, please. In this illustrative site plan for a mixed-use air rights development, you can see how air rights building footprints delineate the edges of that open space network. A mixed-use transit-oriented development is envisioned, a combination of office, residential, and hotel uses that would typically sit atop activated ground floor uses across the site. And as you saw in the animation, there is an aspiration to include a cultural and institutional use to enhance the viability and vibrancy of the planned neighborhood. Next, please. So, this is the final image in the presentation to the illustrative rendering that was developed to describe what an air rights development that is thoughtfully coordinated with the revised SCP can provide. It's obviously an area of view looking south towards the Capitol grounds and the mall, and it describes the connection between and extensions to existing flanking neighborhoods. The tear in Lanfance urban fabric that was created with the rail yard, when it was established, that tear was created when it was established, can be mended, and long-separated neighborhoods on both sides of the tracks can be bridged and reconnected by both the public and the private projects. So, this is the final image in our presentation. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gillian and Mr. Tuckman. Does the commission have any questions for our presenters? Hearing none. Our next speaker is Gregory Cohen with Greyhound Bus Lines. Mr. Cohen, welcome. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the commission. I'm Greg Cohen, representing Greyhound Lines. Greyhound provides the backbone of intercity bus transportation in America, serving more than two thousand communities. Intercity bus is the greenest mode and the mode of choice for cost-conscious travelers seeking the most affordable transportation. The Union Station Redevelopment Act created a new vision, which was once a train station is to become a complex primarily as a multiple-use transportation terminal, and secondarily as a commercial complex. The law specifically recognizes the importance of intercity buses in the redeveloped complex. We've worked for decades to relocate Greyhound into Union Station and succeeded in 2012. Let's say, without the support of Congresswoman Norton, we might still be three blocks away with our passengers rolling their luggage over the sidewalks to get, to get there. Today, we support implementation of a world-class redevelopment that provides a welcoming gateway for all. Washington is the southern terminus of the most well-traveled bus corridor in America. At the northern terminus, Boston is building a major expansion of its intercity bus facility at South Station, while New York is planning to do the same at the Newport Authority Terminal. The goal in these cities is to get away from inadequate facilities that push intercity buses, pickups, into the neighborhoods and onto local city streets. However, in Washington, all of the working alternatives call for bus slip capacity to be substantially reduced from our current sixty-one to sixty-nine spaces, while rail capacity and commercial development are dramatically increased. This suggests the transportation needs of bus customers are of secondary importance. I'm here to ask the NCPC to make sure that the intercity bus mode is treated equitably and with dignity by increasing capacity for intercity buses. The DEIS recognizes that minorities and low-income persons rely on the bus for intercity travel much more than other demographics. That is certainly the case with Greyhound, which is a majority-minority provider. Greyhound has worked with the planners and stakeholders to increase bus capacity. This included engaging with one of the most, world's most experienced intercity bus facility architects to show how, with minor modification to the architect's work, the bus slip capacity could be increased from thirty-four to fifty-six slips. We have made some progress, and that the latest design from the architects include thirty-nine bus slips on the bus deck and room for twelve staging spots on the puto level above, with direct access to the loading and unloading areas on the bus deck. While Greyhound strongly prefers growth and capacity rather than reduction, we are open to a compromise based on FRA's plans, but only under some key conditions. First, we do request that the fifty-six slip plan that we proposed and the other bus deck carriers agreed to receive more detailed analysis and more thoughtful consideration. Second, if that plan is ultimately rejected, we-
That's three minutes.
Well, sir, we're an organization. Can we, we understood that originally that organizations had five minutes.
Please continue, Mr. Cohen.
Okay. If the fifty-six plan is ultimately rejected, we request that the latest thirty-nine plus twelve plan that FRA is working on includes a written commitment that the twelve staging area spots be guaranteed to be available to intercity buses on demand. Three, the plan should recognize and commit to keeping access costs at current levels plus inflation. And four, that scheduled service open to the public have priority access to the bus deck. Again, we have developed a positive working relationship with the planners, but we do not yet support the latest plans. If we can reach an agreement that meets the conditions I discussed that would help to keep the project moving quickly. And I also want to take a moment to thank the Fine Arts Commission participants in the latest Norton hearing for recognizing the importance of bus access. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Do commissioners have any questions for Mr. Cohen? Hearing none. We will move to our next speaker, Mr. Dan Rodriguez with Coach USA. Mr. Rodriguez, welcome, and you have three minutes to provide your testimony.
Thank you. I'm before you as a representative of both Coach USA, its subsidiary Megabus, and the Bus Association of New Jersey, of which I am president of. By way of background, Coach USA is one of the largest transportation operators in North America. We operate more than twenty-five hundred buses and coaches and employ hundreds, thousands of, across the nation and Canada. We bring service to financially insecure diverse families who depend on our services for fast and affordable transportation to their jobs and other important destinations. Megabus has served more than fifty-five million customers throughout more than a hundred cities, and most importantly, our passengers who rely on economical and efficient transportation to the DC area. We have carefully reviewed the draft environmental impact study and find it disconnected between the alternatives provided and the motor coach traveler needs to displace and significantly reduce the bus capacity of Megabus would rupture the very specific intent of what the Union Station set out to achieve in the Union Station Redevelopment Act of nineteen eighty-one. Specifically, it empowers the Secretary of Transportation to, and I quote, "provide the rehabilitation and redevelopment of the Union Station complex primarily as a multiple-use transportation terminal service for the nation's capital, and secondarily as a commercial complex," end of quote. While the Union Station Redevelopment Act was enacted in nineteen eighty-one, a bus deck was not offered to the public at Union Station until 2012. The popularity was instantaneous as it increased over the years, and now provides Megabus and other carriers sixty-one bus slips to use on a regular basis for the loading and unloading of passengers. These bus slips offer a safe way for customers to avoid traffic and protects them from the elements of weather. In its no-action alternative, the DEIS provides that intercity bus service is projected to increase from two-point-five million passengers annually to three-point-one-seven million passengers annually, or an increase of twenty-seven percent. Moreover, the DEIS also notes an increase in the rail service to grow twenty-four percent. These increases for both rail and bus are necessary to point out for this insofar as they are not only projecting a similar rate increase, but also reflects the need to provide multiple-use options for travel. The DEIS provides a variety of the alternatives, but in every instance, there is a reduction to the bus facility area and significant increase to the rail tracks and platforms. Our concern lies with the ability to meet the same increased demand and still continue to have a fully operational and functional home at Union Station that is satisfactorily equipped to- that is satisfactorily equipped to achieve this purpose. A reduction of bus slips would create a disparity of choice for those who depend on us the most. This disparity does not serve the USRA's but rather falls back to a time where there is a multiple use terminal, one that will affect financially insecure families the most. The data is provided in the DEIS shows that there is a clear need for less costly, efficient and reliable transportation options. Bus transportation provides a myriad of opportunities that will only increase over time. To stifle and protract those opportunities would be a disservice to the public, especially the underserved. Our preference would be to preserve the current levels of bus slips. The alternatives that proposed in the DEIS are woefully lacking in meeting our operational needs. The proposed reduction to 40 bus slips capacity is a reduction from the July 7, 2016 memorandum, which originally provided an allowance of 47 bus slips. Between 2016 and 2019, Megabus increased its trips to Union Station by 22%. In May of 2020, that continues to support the 47 slips as it notes in the alternatives. Also, the bus slips had a range from 17 to 27 would not be conducive for either bus passenger, operating carrier, or surrounding area of Union Station as it will dramatically decrease economic activity generated by tourism and business travel. For Thanksgiving of 2019, Megabus added 40 extra buses to ensure we met demand for Union Station as a final destination. 17 or 40 bus slips could not handle this event and others in any practical efficient manner. Simply put, the reduction of slips does not address or acknowledge how much reduced bus facility would accommodate the influx of bus travelers. Coach USA considers itself a part of the mosaic of Union Station and it's optimistic and enthusiastic to help bring the project to fruition. But it must be done in preserving and retaining a sufficient number of bus slips to accommodate the increasing volume. I thank the commission for the opportunity to address it, and this is an important issue. I look forward to its work in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Are, do the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Rodriguez? Yes, Commissioner Mendelson?
I may have some questions, but I thought I'd wait till all the witnesses. That's okay.
Oh, that would be perfect. Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Our next speaker is Anthony Williams. Mr. Williams, you are speaking on behalf of the Federal City Council and have five minutes to speak. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. I'm trying to start my video. Can you, can you guys allow me to do that?
Yes.
You don't, you don't want to see me? It's okay.
We can see you.
Yeah, Madam Chair and Director Acosta, thank you so much for the opportunity to testify before the commission. Thank you for your work in general. All the work, for example, you're doing on Pennsylvania Avenue was just another example of your contribution to the district. We appreciate that. I also want to acknowledge the commitment of the district government to the Union Station Expansion Project in general and particularly not only the mayor, but the leadership of Council Chairman Phil Mendelson in making the initial launch investment in the H Street Bridge, which is really on the critical path of the project with a platform work that has to be done along with some work now studying various alternatives to get this project underway. So we're thrilled to support the revised concept. We really believe that FRA's revised concept truly listens and effectively responds to stakeholder concerns raised during the environmental impact statement, public comment period. And as this happens, the expansion plan now embodies, we think, the best practices in safety and accessibility and station operations, historic preservation and urban design. The revised concept, we believe, provides a bold vision for stakeholders to rally behind and with it to finally get, very importantly, the necessary political and financial underpinning necessary to realize this expansion project. Why do we support this so strongly? We've heard a lot of the reasons already. Right size, optimally located parking facilities that not only respond to customer needs as people ingress egress from Union Station via cars, but balances this with the other uses. At the station, we believe that the bus facility not only effectively accommodates, efficiently accommodates bus ridership, including the number of slips, but very importantly, as a matter of equity and inclusion. I am very excited about the fact that the Union Station Expansion Project really celebrates along with rail travel. Bus travel is an important element of a modern city's transportation needs. Whether we came to America and American cities in steerage or bondage, you know, cities were about upward mobility, upward mobile access, and bus transit is an important part of that. And celebrating that as part of the public spaces and the internal workings of the station, I think, is really worthy of praise. I talked about the parking. I will mention that again. Integrating a number of modes of transit. I always say if you take, we saw slides of Pancras Station. I always say if you took Pancras Station, Paddington Station in London and King's Cross and threw them all together, you would have the important intermodal complex transportation network that you'd see at a revised expanded Union Station project. This does it and very excited to support it. And last but not least, the station really gets that in a very, I think, impressive way. Not only through the air rights that we've seen, but in the station itself, really celebrating the monumental character of the original Burnham Station, but really in an important way, in a compatible way, blending that with the rest of the neighborhood, making it not only a place for transportation, as we heard, but a place to come and celebrate and really recreate and really enjoy what a modern city like Washington DC can offer by having a Union Station expanded as a key anchor on the northeast quarter. So Madam Chair and members of the commission, thank you for allowing me to testify. Let's go get them with a project. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Williams. Do commissioners have any questions for Mr. Williams?
Madam Chair. Just like to say hello to our former mayor and thank him for appointing me at some point during his career as mayor. So good to see you, Tony. Good thanks. Nice hearing from you. Bye bye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Thank you for your service.
And we appreciate that gift to the commission, Mr. Williams, Mayor Williams. Our next speaker is Stuart Schwartz with the Coalition for Smarter Growth. Mr. Schwartz, you have five minutes to speak.
Thank you. I'll try to be, try to be efficient. It's hard to top Mayor Williams and those amazing videos showing the great design work that's been done. I want to thank you, Madam Chair, the fellow commissioners and staff for your great work on behalf of our great capital city. We are enthusiastic supporter of the updated and much improved plan. My organization just reaches 25th anniversary and we advocate for walkable, bikeable and transit oriented communities as the most sustainable and equitable way for the Washington DC region to grow and to provide opportunities for all. When we last commented on the plans for Union Station back in January 2020, we affirmed, we affirmed our strong support for extending rail service and the station and the Burnham Place development, but did share significant concerns about the proposal, mentioned a thousand above ground parking spaces, which we felt undermined the entire design of the facility. Therefore, we've been very pleased to see removal of the above ground garage and significant reduction in parking spaces. However, in our view, if it is indeed 860, it's probably still too many and we've heard that 400 to 700 spaces was possible. And we urge the selection of the lower end of the range. The overwhelmingly overwhelming focus of this downtown hub must be on transit, pedestrian and bicycle access, as well as pickup and drop off. But the removal of the parking garage and place for the parking underground is transformative. It's allowed for the amazing train concourse with the natural light, proved access to the trains, the bus station and the pickup and drop off. So I think a testament to the value of public input, your input, the effort by the city to reduce the impact of cars and the consideration of creative alternatives. We like the location design as a single level bus station, placing it in a prominent location next to the train hall and encourage reaching operational solutions to meet the demand. We concur with the vehicle access points, but ask you to ensure that the ramp on G Street and other vehicle access points do not endanger safe pedestrian bicycle access. The upper pickup and drop off roadway must allow for safe ped bike access to the public spaces in the Burnham Place development and should include well marked crossings, traffic calming and on scene safety monitors as necessary. Bicycle access to the station is important. It's good to see the new additional bike connectivity. And it should include, I don't think I've seen, saw an illustration of it, a well located, secure, modern and easy to use bike station, similar to those in Europe that accommodate thousands of bicycles. We ask that you restore seating into the main hall of the historic station and to the new concourses. People need comfortable place to sit while waiting their trains and buses and good seating contributes to the positive experience of using transit, helping mail service compete with driving. Please ensure the historic main hall remains an active part of the rail service operations and that we give special attention to easy connection to Metro Rail and frequent bus service via Columbus Circle. Finally, we commend your attention to the positive letter of support from ANC 6C, people who live in the immediate neighborhood, who told me they weren't able to attend in person today and who work closely with the planners to improve the design and circulation and integration with the neighborhood. So we urge your approval with appropriate recommendations for the issues we've highlighted and have to say that the plan is extremely exciting. You're following in the spirit of Daniel Burnham here. It's a great new vision for a region's premier transportation hub. Thank you.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions for Mr. Schwartz? I will wait till the end. Our next speaker, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Our next speaker is Monte Edwards on behalf of the Committee of 100. Mr. Edwards, you have five minutes to speak.
Thank you. First, let me say that the Committee of 100 is very pleased that the Union Station Expansion Plan project is moving forward. The update to the Union Station revised expansion plans to eliminate the existing parking garage and thereby allow, excuse me, thereby allow realignment of the tracks. And, but there is no discussion about the realignment of the tracks and only very limited and dated information about the lower level tracks that provide access to the First Street Tunnel and South. That was shown on sheet 17 of the NCPC presentation. The new rail bridge across the Potomac and the additional Southwest tracks that the new rail bridge will provide will allow increased Amtrak service south and increased mark service. And the new rail bridge in Southwest tracks will result in separation of passenger and freight rail operations south of Union Station. This momentous change in rail operations will transform our rail system into a more modern, efficient and inclusive rail network and will better serve the DC region and the East Coast rail network. But this dramatic change in rail operations is completely ignored in the Union Station draft environmental impact statement. In fact, the draft environmental impact statement clearly states the contrary, that passenger and commuter rail south of Union Station will be controlled by CSX. The quote at Appendix B of the DEIS is, "The 2040 simulation retains operation variability for trains arriving from the south, given a soon continued ownership and dispatch by freight railroads in the future." The run through tracks on the lower level will need to accommodate the increased passenger commuter traffic to and from the south. But Sheet 19 of NCPC file 7746, Modernized Tracks and Platforms, which I believe was Sheet 17 in the NCPC presentation, shows only seven run through tracks. The same number of run through tracks in the June 2020 Union Station DEIS and does not take into consideration the new two track Long Bridge rail crossing, substantial CSX trackage in Virginia that VRE has and will acquire, as well as the new fourth track in Southwest that will separate passenger and commuter from rail operations. The 2020 Union Station DEIS failed to take into account this increased number of Amtrak trains to and from the south, as well as the mark through running to Virginia and Virginia through running to Maryland. Appendix B of the Union Station DEIS showed 29 Amtrak trains, eight mark trains, and 46 VRE trains would use the new Long Bridge by 2040. But page 329 of the Long Bridge EIS shows 44 Amtrak trains, eight mark trains and 92 VRE trains and eight Norfolk Southern trains that would use the Southwest tracks and Long Bridge by 2040. The updated Union Station Expansion Analysis needs to account for this increased rail traffic in design of the lower run through tracks. We would like to emphasize in closing that Union Station is a rail station and needs to be a key note, essential of the Union Station expansion. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Do commissioners have any questions for Mr. Edwards? Commissioner Mendelson?
Well, my question is for related to Mr. Edwards' testimony as well as the two bus companies. Does FRA have, can, I would like to hear their response. I don't know if they have their transportation expert or engineer present to answer.
So you'd like FRA to respond to the concerns raised by the bus operators as well as the concerns from Mr. Edwards about track and operations?
Yes.
I think this would be a great time to do that, and we do have one more speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Val, oh no, that's okay. Shall we go ahead since Mr. Wallenstein is, is ready here? And if there comes, if something comes up in the next one, we will ask you to come back. But thank you, Mr. Wallenstein, for addressing these issues.
Your right, Madam Chair, and I, and I will call on some of the other SCPs, the SCP sponsors to also help answer these questions. In terms of the bus operations, we have to, we have to keep in mind the existing condition of 61 bus slips is not, they're not 61 active use bus slips, but 61 spaces for buses in the existing facility. Whereas the new facility, the number count is all for very active use pedestrian passenger access slips that are designed to modern standards. The, in terms of capacity, there, we, there are many studies that we've completed about capacity and forecasting and they will be well documented in the supplemental draft EIS. And, and I and, and so, and in terms of additional response on the bus, I would ask Kevin Forma if he would join.
Um, yeah, so I think just working on or connecting to what David said, you know, we do have 61 slips today. However, there are only a portion of those are actively used for inner city carriers. There are a lot of ancillary uses on the bus deck for circulator, some shuttles, other large vehicle parking that were not accounted for moving forward. Or I should say they were not counted in the structured facility moving forward. You know, regarding the circulator, we pledged to work with the district on a, something that makes sense campus wide approach to that. The analysis that we, we did with taking the carriers' comments in mind, allowing for ample room to for the carriers to lay over in the facility and really looking at the existing schedules and And uh really looking at the existing schedules and uh applying appropriate growth methodology to twenty forty. So I I hope that answers your your question on on the uh carriers and the amount of spaces that we have. We, of course. Continue and will continue to work with carriers. Um and all stakeholders moving forward on. On refining, further refining the alternative as it advances. Also definitely as uh the commission recommended or the staff recommended. Uh working on an operations plan. Um that works for both the inner city carriers and for the tour and charter uh tour groups that we can see are at the station.
I can follow up on the buses. Um right now, are the slips actively managed? Uh or is it more passive and going forward, is it possible to get greater efficiency by uh having um? I'm going to say active management of the utilization.
The the future concept is is definitely a change in operations. Um and that is why we. We will plan on moving uh. Working with the carrier carriers to refine that operation as. Future technology develops and uh. But that to direct response to your question today, no, we we do not have an active management uh approach as such.
Today.
Today, yeah, I mean that, you know, the uh the existing station does get. Overwhelmed at times with tour and charter activity, especially if there's uh protests or some event on the National Mall, so. Um we we do get up to capacity during those events, I believe, you know. The plan moving forward would be. Um what was mentioned is the Pudo facility on top, on top of the bus station. As sort of a relief and safety valve when it's needed. Um to allow for additional bus activity. So those were the twelve spaces um that I believe the great uh. They come from Grayhome uh mentioned. Um so again, we are, we are actively working on. Refining the operational program moving forward. Um but you know, we'll, we'll need to continue to develop that as the technology arises and. And we and we see what best practices are uh as the, as we get closer to building the facility.
What about the testimony, Mr. Wallenstein uh regarding the um? Uh what is it called? The through run through rail?
Certainly, uh thank you for the question. There's, there's actually the the two projects, sort of the long bridge project and the Union Station project have been. Well coordinated um as F R A has been the lead federal agency in planning both projects. Specifically uh. My, I I think, you know, while there may be some. A specific documentation uh alignment issues uh from the twenty twenty. Draft E I S for Union Station and and documentation around uh the the Long Bridge. Project, um there there may be some um confusion around that. W- we see the uh capacity and it forecasts as harmonized and. Aligned. The Union Station project has been carefully planned to provide. The necessary capacity anticipated in in the south corridor going to Virginia. Uh the increases in V R E service, increases in um. Amtrak service and and the potential for Mark and V R E through running trains that, you know. It it's a very train to the south and it's a marked train to the north, but it's the same train and it continues in both directions. It, it, my, my colleague, Dan Sporak. Uh is there anything, would you like to join? Is there anything else you'd like to add on on that topic?
Um yes, certainly, David. Sorry, I'm um, am I coming through now? Um yeah, I I think in in terms of overall capacity i- in the future. As before I mentioned, uh we're actually reducing the number of tracks. However, uh tracks uh platforms will be wider and longer, so we're. Increasing the linear feet of platform length um available for revenue service. So this does. A lot for us operationally. Um we're able to operate more efficiently. We're able to double stack trains. Um and particularly on the lower level, while we're not increasing the number of revenue tracks. Um we're also adding special track work. Uh it doesn't exist today, so this allows for movement of trains um uh switching and. Uh entering into the tunnel and and heading south. Um and just to echo what um David you said earlier. You know, Amtrak, we're at our state partners, working directly with F R A on both project as well. Um and we're well aware and aligned on capacity increases south of Washington, but then also north as well.
I would, I would like to mention that the attachment to my testimony. Contains extracts from both. The uh Long Bridge E I S, which is now record of decision. And the draft uh E I S for Union Station. Both of them are twenty twenty dates. However, we have twenty nine Amtrak trains in the. In the Union Station. Uh analysis, forty four train, Amtrak trains in the Long Bridge analysis. I'm. Concerned that we know that both now Maryland and Virginia have authorized through running. And through running of Mark. To Maryland, Mark to Virginia and V R E to Maryland. Was not taken into account in these figures and we're concerned that. Are we adequately allowing capacity for the railroads to do what they're planning? And for this Union Station as we rebuild it and expand it. To serve as an efficient rail station. Thank you.
Uh thank you, Mr. Edwards. Um. Mr. Wallenstein, I I would. I ask if you want to take some time with that question, perhaps in the next presentation. Um and come back and and respond to that. I'm sure it's a very complex answer and something that you're working out. Throughout the process since we're at conceptual stage. But uh thank you very much for answering the previous questions. Um Commissioner Mendelson, did you have further questions you wanted to pose?
No, I think though it would be helpful if Mr. Wallenstein came back with the um further comment.
Thank you. Um the last speaker is Laura Moore. Ms. Moore, you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you so much. I um actually am speaking towards the uh tour bus issue. I'm a licensed D C R licensed D C tour guide and um. I live in DC also, so I use Union Station for many reasons, but professionally meet tour guides regularly at Union Station. Um groups arrive by motor coach from out of state, often in convoys of several buses that bring hundreds of tourists at a time. To Washington. Um during our busy spring tourist season, there may be thousands, and I do mean thousands. Of tourists, mostly students, eighth graders are are bread and butter. Using Union Station at the same time for lunch or dinner, so um. One way to think about this is that tour buses bring in lots of dollars and could, under the right conditions, bring in lots more. Um I'm also a board member of the Guild of Professional Tour Guides of Washington, D C. Uh the Professional Tour Guy, uh Tour Association, Professional Association of about five hundred local guides and affiliated tour operators. And I'm co-chair of the Guild's Government Tourism Committee, which has been liaising. Uh for the last few years with U S R C on these redevelopment plans. Um tour guides are a important stakeholder in the project. Our business will be greatly impacted by these proposals. Um so I I'm really grateful to be able to speak uh for my three minutes here. Um we did have profound objections to the twenty twenty D I S plans. Uh which would have routed tour buses into local neighborhoods, increased congestion and pollution and um at best greatly inconvenience tour groups. Accessing the station and at worst put them into actual dangerous situations, so. I'm really grateful um to U S R C and a shout out especially to Kevin Forma, who's great to work with. Um for taking our comments um seriously in this new plan. Uh the co-chair, my co-chair of this committee and I are pleased to see that there will now be enough space for tour groups to unload and move safely. Through the station. And that motor coach operators uh will be able to park their buses safely and for the amount of time necessary for trip groups to shop and eat. Um which is the main reason they come to Union Station. And we also really appreciate the analysis of the data on usage and the projections for increased usage in deciding on the number of parking slips for buses. Um we do, however, share concerns with our friends at the bus carriers. Um continue to worry that there will not be enough parking space. Especially during our busy season during meal times when we can be really slammed. Um so I do want to really emphasize um as much as possible that need for safe to safely drop off and pick up groups. And by groups, I do mean. Uh could be hundreds of people at the same time. Honestly, those wonderful animations would be more realistic in my view of things who did. Images of dozens of thirteen year olds in matching neon T-shirts. Um so um I'd like to suggest perhaps dedicating slips specifically for drop off and pickup, something like that. Um but uh our our feeling is that at this point, our concerns are mostly operational rather than with the design. Um an example of that is that tour groups usually arrive without reservations and cannot realistically hold to. A specific drop off and pick up times. Um so those are some conversations we're looking forward to continuing to have with U R S R C. As they move on into these next um stages of planning. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Um do commissioners have any questions for Ms. Moore? Uh hearing none, um you have our thanks and reminding us about the eighth graders. And and such a a traditional thing for eighth graders to do to visit the capital, so your concerns about operations, I'm sure will be. Taken to heart and I hope you stay engaged in the in the communications and the rest of the process. Uh that concludes the public testimony on this proposal. Copies of all of the testimony are also included on our website. In addition, we received comment letters from the N O M A Business Improvement District. A N C six D, the Washington Area Bicycle Association, and from Council Member Charles Allen. I will now open up the item to discussion with the commission. Could everyone please turn on your cameras? I will start with Commissioner Mendelson and then go in a round robin format using our normal seating order. And I ask that you keep your webcams on during the discussion. So Commissioner Mendelson.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Uh you had suggested that Mr. Wallenstein. Uh or F R A or Amtrak respond to Mr. Edwards' last. Comments and I'd like to hear that.
Um yes, I did, and I don't know how detailed their answer will be, but I would love to give Mr. Wallenstein uh an opportunity. To at least speak to the issue today and and of course come back with a. With a more um examined um answer for us, but please, Mr. Wallenstein.
Um th- thank you, and I appreciated the opportunity of a couple of minutes to to uh. Look at at some material. Um the the data in the. Station Expansion Project Documentation is about round trip. Train trips. And the data in the Long Bridge E I S is about one way, sorry, is about one way trips. So to compare. Am I saying that the wrong way? Uh the Union Station data would need to be doubled to make it the same as the Long Bridge data. I saw you, so it's the other way around. The 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 Union Station data is about one way trips. And the Long Bridge data is about round trips, so they're not apples and oranges. They they are apples and oranges, not apples and apples. So the uh. Mr. Edwards cited uh forty four Amtrak trips. Um those are in both directions. The Union Station data showed twenty nine Amtrak trips. You would need to double that to make comparable data to the Long Bridge document, which would be about thirty. And uh I'm sorry, uh would be would be about um. Sixty, actually. So it's a higher number than the Long Bridge document and um that was, we were stress testing. The station um and and so we're not constraining it by what was planned for the Long Bridge project. So it's actually higher, a higher number um in terms of capacity. I'm not, I hope I'm making sense. Answers a bit. But but the the. This is the core of the issue is that we represented uh the number of round trips. In in the Union Station document, we represented one way. Trips in the Long Bridge document, so it was different, different uh and data meant different things.
I I think he also spoke to V R E and Mark.
Yes, um. He did. So in, for instance, in the S E P document. Mr. Edwards cited forty six V R E. Trip trains and in the Long Bridge document ninety two. Well, if you, if you do dub, if you, if the forty six are round trips and you double them for one way trips. That would equal ninety two.
So in essence, um the data is comparable between the two studies. Uh more importantly, what you're saying is that F R A has looked carefully at. Uh the increased capacity or usage on Long Bridge and um. Looked at that in connection with Union Station or vice versa.
That's it, that's accurate.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mendelson, any other uh comments or?
Not at, not at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg.
Thanks, I am here. I have a couple of things. One is, I just wanted to thank everybody for the tour that we took. I guess it was last week. That was really helpful, so thank you for bringing us on that tour. Um second, I just want to mention that I think a lot of what we're hoping to happen here will be supported by the. In Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, so I just want to put that up there saying we're really excited that this. Uh legislation that we enacted in Congress can be so helpful in the communities that matter a lot to everyone every day. Third, I want to state that I was in touch with Ms. Norton and and her staff and they just. Uh wanted to reiterate through uh through me that uh they support. Uh all the needs for the buses to get in and have visitors get safely on and off the buses and to make sure that we are. Planning for continued growth and surge capacity when surge capacity is needed at these, at at the facility. Uh and to make sure that we go back and make, and and ensure that we can accommodate the needs of everyone who wants to come to the city. Um by whatever means of transportation they choose and whatever means of transportation they can afford. Um I'm glad to see the data, data and evidence are being used to help, help make that planning possible, but it seems like. There might need to be a little more thinking um on that. Um some of the other things that just came to mind, um I know that when we took the tour. Uh David Touchman, I'm not even sure I'm saying his name right, but we talked a little bit about civic spaces. And I've been thinking about what that means and I I looked at a lot of the renderings that they have about the civic area. Um designed out back and that looks really good if it's um. Spring or fall, but maybe not when it's summer or winter. And um I'm going to put on my uh Commissioner Cash hat for a second and worn against water fixtures for a brief moment. And 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 think that through, but I I I understand the complexity of trying to figure out what a civic space actually means and I. I took something that we learned when we were visiting the facility the other day is that there was a community that was interrupted, that was divided. When Union Station was originally built just after the turn of uh the century. And I'm thinking maybe this is a moment to rebuild that community and and show that community through that civic space and tell the story of. What was called, I guess it was called Swamp Hootle back in the day and maybe bringing that community back into um. Into reality, present it more vividly and remember the communities and the people who lived there. Um and how they were disrupted by the space and and celebrate that community. Um just me thinking out loud about what could be possible with this space. Plus, they had apparently like a really cool baseball club and a baseball stadium, which gives you a lot to work with. Uh let's see if there's anything else. Uh the other thing I was just thinking about, like this gives you ramp uh like a a very big. Opportunity to talk about like the history of locomotives, the history of transportation, the history of amazing architecture and historical design in D C. There's just so many things you could do with that space. Um that would make it, I think, a a civic destination. Plus maybe more useful year round than just a bunch of um water spaces and and water fixtures that you walk through. Um and as a final pitch, and this is where I put on my Commissioner May hat and I talk about the use of bikes. Um I I know when we visited the facility, the the movement of bikes with pedestrians and with vehicles, it already is not good. It was pretty dangerous and confusing. Um I'm hoping that the redesign can help that, but I'm also curious to see. Uh what is going to be done in terms of uh where you can leave your bike. It doesn't look like the. what is going to be done in terms of, uh, where you can leave your bike. It doesn't look like the, the existing bike lock structure is maintained. I'd love to see what is thought through there. And I'd love to learn more about sort of the signage about how you're going to, um, use, uh, customer experience to make sure that the traffic flow that you've envisioned by design is actually the traffic flow that you're going to see in reality once this is finished. Um, and how you're going to make that as intuitive as possible. And I think those were the things that came into my head, but thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much for those thoughtful comments. Commissioner Cozart.
Yes, thank you. Um, and happy to follow Commissioner Ginsburg on this because I, I think some of my comments are aligned there. We're really pleased to see, um, the refinements from the FRA on those concept plans, um, that were summarized there. And also particularly around the reduction in parking, um, and a second look at the bus facility and a second look at the pickup and drop off areas. I also really appreciated, uh, the, um, videos that were shared. That's a significant level of work and really impressed with the racial and age diversity that I saw in the videos. I didn't see as much diversity around, um, kind of, um, personal mobility, uh, didn't see a lot of people in wheelchairs or using, uh, mobility assisted devices. I think that is actually important to think about uh, in the same way that we think about, um, uh, folks who are traveling as pedestrians, cyclists and vehicles. So just want to encourage, uh, continued thought about that. Um, we, uh, are really interested as, as the project moves forward and, um, support it moving forward, really focusing in on, uh, again, pedestrian and multimodal connectivity, retaining the historic stature and civic character of the station and the environs is really important, both for the station expansion itself and the air rights, um, that are related to the surrounding community. So, um, this is very much tied to, um, the policies in the most recently adopted comprehensive plan. Um, and so I just wanted to, to flag that, uh, issues related to accessible pedestrian connections, making sure that as we move forward, there's better, there's greater certainty around that and making sure that there's linkages to the adjacent neighborhoods from that perspective. And, uh, that we look forward to see more information about that. Also, um, those multimodal connections really honing in on how those are going to, uh, play out, both from a design perspective, but then also from a, um, uh, feasibility perspective, just making sure that, um, the experience of a traveler is one where it's accessible and streamlined. Also really thinking about, um, what are those, uh, arrivals and departures that happened at the historic grand entrance at Columbus Circle? How is that, uh, well aligned? Also want to think about what are the kind of ground floor treatments and that are, and activations at the street level? Just making sure that as we have ramps and access to parking structures that we're avoiding those, uh, blank facades and making sure that the, the, um, the kind of character around those are ones that, um, folks who are, are traveling to, um, Union Station will enjoy. And really, um, I appreciate, um, in the presentation, the piece that, um, NCPC staff, staff flagged around the D Street rant. This, uh, really important, uh, component, it probably would benefit from a design shred between both district and federal partners there. Um, also wanna from a, um, historic reservation standpoint and overall urban design standpoint, really reflecting on kind of the South Entrance and its distinct and, uh, clear character reading as a civic space that's inviting to all, that's one that everyone belongs in. We need to make sure that the best elements of that and, um, are treated for the North Entrance too, so that that reads clearly like a civic space, not like a private space, uh, like one, um, that, that folks would want to be a part of. So I really, like I said, want to second what, um, some of the ideas from Commissioner Ginsburg, because I think those speak to that more civic kind of space. Um, is it really the air rights portion, you know, that piece around kind of the central green? It be feeling like a, uh, civic space design for all is really important. Really thinking about the buildings that are closest to the new train hall. What is their, um, design character and thinking about making sure that there's good transitions there? That's the kind of thing that will be important for us to, um, think about. But certainly, um, on behalf of Mayor Bowser, we're very supportive of this project moving forward, the approval of, um, the, the comments from, uh, that NCPC is providing to this and very much, uh, the, the next steps, uh, around in continuing to engage the community are very important. I was happy to see the, um, uh, information come in from, um, Councilmember Allen and the ANC and a number of civic groups, commenting on this and looking forward to continuing to move forward, uh, with this, both on the station expansion and the air rights development. And so want to see that, uh, that, um, continue, uh, in terms of engagement. So that's, those are my main comments. I don't really have questions. Really appreciate the staff, uh, presentation. And we know this has been a complicated project or complex project. Um, and so appreciate the staff for all of the coordination that they have done and will continue to do as we go forward.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon.
Yeah, thank you. Um, not a whole lot of questions. Um, I'm just going to listen to, uh, the other members of, uh, the commission who have, uh, very good comments and recommendations, uh, which I've heard so far, I agree with. The only thing I'm watching and just I would note is, uh, this continuing conversation about capacity, uh, both for rail, especially rail south, and also for buses, making sure that's right. We've heard, uh, a discussion both sides about what's needed compared to what we're there building. Uh, the only thing I just note in here, we haven't talked about it much, is, uh, whether we are providing appropriate connections, uh, in the new designs for, for Metro. Having, uh, taken that Metro station, I think about a month ago to have, uh, weekend dinner with guests from out of town. Um, it's, uh, not an afterthought. Many of you know more about how that was built at Union Station than I do, but, uh, I didn't see much discussion of it in the presentation or in a plan. So I think moving forward with overall, it looks to be a well thought out design that responded to many of your comments as well as others, uh, over the last year, uh, that, uh, that's looked at and, and given to do. It's, I think that Wamata, uh, needs to succeed in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner May.
Yes, uh, thank you. So, uh, it'll be a challenge. I'll try to be brief. So the first thing I'll say is that, um, all right, and I'll, you know, people are channeling other people in this meeting, so I'll, I'll channel Daniel Burnham and say, and you know, this has probably been done, but you know, make no little plans for they have no magic to stir man's hearts, right? Well, so this is no little plan. And, uh, it is very exciting. So, um, I'm very encouraged. I'm very encouraged by the changes that have been made. I will also also comment that, you know, one of the, one of the challenges from Union Station historically has been, uh, its size. And, and I don't mean the fact that it's too small. I mean, the fact that it's too large and that the distances that people have to walk to get from a vehicle that delivers them there, whether it's a bike, a car, a bus, uh, to the tracks has always been too big. I mean, it is indeed a train of magnificent, magnificent distances, right? To throw in another quote. Anyway, um, it's a, uh, but I do think that there have been some very important moves that bring the tracks closer to people. So having those entrance points, uh, both at the top and then, uh, the, the concourse that connects from one side of the station to the other end of the Hopscotch Bridge, um, is a huge improvement and will make it easier to get to a train. And, uh, now, I will also say, um, I think there are a few things that have been pointed out by some of the other folks who have testified today, uh, the need, uh, you know, to see seating in the station. I mean, I, I appreciate the fact that they want to show these grand halls, uh, and lots of room to move around and, you know, chairs, seating benches, whatever clutter things up. But, uh, seating is really important, especially at a train station where you could be waiting for several hours for your train. And, uh, so those sorts of things are, I mean, really do have to be part of, uh, what we see in these spaces. And they need to be, they, they can't just be an afterthought, right? You can't just go to the, uh, catalog and buy a whole bunch of, uh, you know, sturdy seating, uh, and, and fill it up. So try to plan that. The, uh, bike station need, uh, also mentioned earlier. I mean, I think that, you know, we're, we're, we'll be losing that bike station on the, on the, uh, west side of the, of the current station. Uh, it's not used at the moment. I guess this is a COVID after effect, or at least not very used. But I remember in years past, even with that station there, going to Union Station and not being able to find a place to lock up a bicycle. So, um, I appreciate Commissioner Ginsburg bringing up this issue as well. You need to make sure that there are, um, good places to park bikes and good places that are where people want to put their bikes. Cause you know, I'm, I'm a, I'm a cyclist around town. I know Commissioner Ginsburg is as well. And, uh, you know, we, we want to have good access and good connections, but we also don't want to park a block and a half away from the destination. That's the thing about bikes is that you can jam them in and jam them in real close. So make sure there's enough place to park bikes, uh, close to where the action is. And, uh, let's see, what else? Oh, the bus capacity issue. Uh, I think this is a critical moment and, uh, we should not be selling short the need for adequate bus space. And it seems to me that the way it's currently configured, there might be another way to lay things out to make sure that you get enough bus spaces in there. I mean, this is, you know, you're not going to be able to create new space once you've done this. And if you find out that you really do need, you know, twenty or thirty percent more, um, bus bays in order to accom- uh, accommodate all of the needs, you know, the opportunity won't be there. Um, so, you know, plan for it now, even if it isn't necessarily going to be all used or implemented. Um, I just, I wouldn't want it to see, uh, this falling short because I don't think buses are going away anytime soon. Uh, and yeah, I think the last thing I would just mention is that, um, you know, all, everything that's happened is great. I agree with so many of the comments that have been said, both by, uh, the people who testified and my fellow commissioners. But the overriding message from my perspective is, remember, this is still a train station and a bus station. And don't lose sight of that. Um, don't, don't let it get confused with the need to have sufficient retail to, you know, pay for this, that, or the other thing. I mean, I think too many efforts in the past to revitalize the station, including those in which my agency have been involved, um, kind of junked it up with other stuff that's not necessary. Uh, and I, I wouldn't want to overdo that stuff, uh, and sacrifice the, the critical needs of, uh, efficient transit needs. So, uh, I've already talked too long, so I'm done. Thank you very much. And on to, uh, Commissioner Argo.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Argo.
I'm laughing. You didn't, um, you didn't junk it up. You, um, it like gave me everything. Reminded me of everything that I needed to mention, but I don't have to, I don't have to repeat it. Um, your comments are always so insightful. Thank you, Commissioner May. I had, uh, I had a, this was, I don't know if it was spoken to directly but indirectly. The whole comments about, um, tracks, uh, closer to people and the people that they're using, you know, that are using them. Echo some of the comments about that. Um, I do have some concerns and I think, uh, I'm trying to remember what Commissioner May said, but something about the main hall and, um, not ignoring the main hall, uh, but remembering that we had that, you know, that beautiful main hall entrance, providing some seating capacity. I can't imagine what it would be like without it, but also not, and I think the words that he used were not, not junk it up with, um, just to, just to fill the space, but keep the, keep the expansive feeling, but make it, um, you know, sort of reasonably utilitarian for, um, the people that will be there. That, that, I think that's hugely important. I agree with the comments about paying, uh, uh, attention to the south as well as the north entrances and, um, not forgetting, not forgetting that entrance and, and focusing on how that entrance is going to be used and who's going to be using it. I think that, um, I should also add, uh, I, I agree also with the comments about bus capacity. And having been, um, I am a regular bus user for, uh, trips to New York. And, um, and I've taken the train, but I take the bus much more often than I take the train. And, um, it's so much easier for me, I won't even mention it, to go someplace else to get the bus. And at least it has been in the last five to 10 years than Union Station. I would love to be going to Union Station to get, um, to get a mega bus or a Vamoose bus or one of the inner city buses that go, um, that go north, uh, from DC. I think that, uh, I think that wraps up my comments and would support, yes, the, um, the additional slips that are being provided, um, for inner city bus transport. Thank you. This has been not overwhelming, but really stimulating. And, um, this is such an important project. It's such an iconic place. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Commissioner Wright.
Well, um, oh, a lot, I, a lot of what I would, would comment on has been said, but a, a couple of things are worth repeating. First of all, I mean, this is such a major improvement, Commissioner, uh, well, Cozart, please make sure that Andrew Trueblood sees the animation. I thought he was going to have an aneurysm last time. And rightly so. Um, so, uh, the pushing the parking and the drop off pickup, all this stuff under the ground does a whole lot of wonderful things. Not least of which among them is allowing for this east-west. I just had a panic moment. Am I, is it east-west connectivity, um, that Commissioner Ginsburg referred to? We did spend some time talking about that, um, on the tour and, and that seems really important, standing in, um, the eight, what was the word for that? The eight, under the ground, the H Street? I don't know what they, how they referred to it, but it, that was super helpful, the understanding, the whole thing. As the project progresses, I would urge, um, the sponsors to, um, include links to the animations for the public every time and ask that press coverage also include the animations or links, um, to them on, in, in digital press because it's so helpful. This is a complicated project for even, even for people who are used to, um, imagining in three dimensions and are, who are pretty good at it. So I think that would be helpful. Also, I would, I, I, I complained about this before. I'm really, and I would urge you to continue to doing, doing so, that is for the, um, station and the air rights development to be presented together because pre- presenting them separately just doesn't make any sense, even if they're, it, you know, one after the other. Just make sure that there's never, that, um, one side of the project is not divorced from the other. And then I have to, I can't help myself. After twelve years, it's pretty clear that I, I'm much more in the design lane than in the planning lane. And, and I, I, I would urge you to ignore the comments that at least I've heard publicly. About, uh, um, you know, actually, it was almost, it was rather insulting that you were unfamiliar with the work of Daniel Burnham and that you should revisit it and, and look at a more historicist approach, um, to the architecture. Wrong. Couldn't agree with, disagree with it more. I think actually one of the, one of the things that comes out, comes, becomes very clear in the animation as well as the, the renderings is you're on to something gorgeous for the, for the train hall. And I would, uh, encourage you through design development to, uh, to hu- very closely to the aesthetic which you have already established. It might be a little too clean because train stations get dirty, but but architecturally, I think there's some illusions, almost some very subtle illusions to Dulles, which are beautiful and appropriate. And and I think pay are appropriately lofty and yet still subservient to the station as the as, I mean, the historic build, station building as it should be. I think the the air rights development has a way to go. In terms of design development, I agree with Commissioner Ginsburg and would caution not only against the the seasonal dead zones that you might be creating with so many water features, but they, and I get that they're 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 cosmetically making some design allusions to the train station as designed by Grimshaw, but you might be overdoing it. And I think that the the practical reality of having that much water, I mean, the engineers in the crowd are going to say, well, we can do it. We can do it. And that's what they always say. But when you're talking about putting all these water features on top of what is going to be a consistently vibrating environment, I don't know if that's advisable. And I think on a more pedestrian level, not literally, but figuratively, it's going to be a pretty tough sell in the winter. With all those water features either turned off or frozen, if they're not skim pools or something like that. So I don't know. I mean, I know that this point, it's just concept. So this is a lot of hand wringing about nothing. Maybe, but the integration of these two aesthetic languages, I think could use a little bit more work. But if I had to pick between the two right now, I think I'd go with 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 the train ship. Because I think it's it hits just the right note and is really I don't know. I think that, you know, to Commissioner May's point, if you're if you're having to sit in that place for a couple hours waiting for a train, it wouldn't be such a bad experience. It's a, it's a, it's beautifully conceived.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Dixon.
I just would associate myself with the eloquent remarks given. I would like to mention one thing. I'm sure that handicap accessibility is is going to be dealt with. I didn't hear much about it, but I'm sure that's going to happen. I also am interested in whether or not these new verticals take off and land. And I know that there is a restriction in the District of Columbia for airspace. But as time goes on, there's going to be a lot of these VTOLs and U A UAVs and these drone type devices taking you from one building to the other or from one place to another. And I don't know whether or not they they're going to accommodate those with the tops of these buildings. I thank you all to think about access to it and accommodating maybe those technologies for the future. I have to make it, I have not been as excited about the about the station as I was when I was a kid. And went down to see the devastation that occurred when the train went through the wall. I don't know how many of you all remember that, but it ended up in the in the in the foyer. And they had to recover from that and they did and did a lot of improvements then. I also remind myself of the joke that was told about this guy who came, a person who came to Washington to visit. And of course, he had to go into Union Station. And when he got home, he told folks he was just really taken back about Washington. But he didn't know it had a top on it. He never got out of the station because there was so much going on there for him from a rural town. And I think if he came back now, we'd all be able to say, if we do this thing, it's going to almost be a world place, a place that you could, you could, you could spend a lot of time in waiting for trains or even as a as a place to come as as a resident. So I'm very excited about it and good luck. And I'm just challenged by the engineering that's going to have to take place to do this work. But if we can get to the moon or Mars and all, I'm sure we can make this happen. Thank you, staff. Thank you all for the presentations and just keep on working on it. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Well, I would love to make a couple of comments about the project. First, to thank the commission members themselves for the thoughtfulness and the careful review and the the real attention to the important details that will make such a difference in the millions of people's lives who will pass through this train station and live in those buildings. And I want to thank the team behind this work because we recognize that you hit a major reset button from the last time we saw this project. It has changed considerably over the past two years and obviously the effort was well worth it, given what you've heard today. These are significant revisions that you've made. They are a game changer and it's had a positive impact on the design. It's the kind of planning and collaboration that we always look to see and that should be a model coming out of Washington DC. And we know it's still a conceptual design. I agree with Commissioner Wright. We can't help but be designers, but whether we're trained for it or not, but I will say that I really love how modern and open the new train hall feels. And I think it it can be an incredible space. And I I will, I want to echo a few comments. All of the comments I think were relevant and need to be really carefully considered. A couple I want to highlight particularly around the mobility issues and I appreciate Commissioner Cozart and Commissioner Dixon for calling attention to those. And I noted in the video. And there's one particular scene where you're you're exiting the building and it shows you going up the staircases and it's it's a lovely scene, but there's no indication of ramps or an elevator nearby. I agree, there were very few examples of people who may be mobility impaired and given the incredible expanse of the spaces Commissioner May pointed out, I think those are really important items that need a little more consideration. I also agree about the civic space and the opportunities that are there to bridge some of the 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 places where the community was split in two. And I I thought Commissioner Ginsburg's ideas were particularly creative in terms of how you, how you work through those issues and make this a very incredibly positive space. And then finally, with the issues around the bus parking or transportation and how we work that out, I I think it's really important to continue that dialogue and keep thinking about the people who are on those buses and what their experiences like. And the the idea of trying to corral a group of eighth graders, I would not want that job. But I'm glad that people like Ms. Moore and her guild are so devoted to it because think of their experience from the moment they step off that bus and what it's going to be like for them to navigate that space and celebrate the fact that they're in the nation's capital. So their experience should be first class. And any bus passenger should be first class, but I'm particularly focused on those eighth graders. I think that really concludes my remarks. If there are no further comments or questions, I would like to call for a motion to approve the revised concept plans for the Washington Union Station Expansion Project. I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I'm willing, it sounds like Commissioner Dixon and I'm willing to say it.
Well, thank you both very much. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion in a second and take the vote by roll call?
Thank you. The motion was made by Commissioner Dixon, the second by Commissioner Cozart. And with that, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendelson?
Yes.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has carried. And I should have made this comment, but I really appreciate the work of the staff. They have really dug into this project and hung in there through the last two years of conversation and dialogue. So thank you to the team.
Yes, I wanted to say that too. That the EDR just nailed it. I thought it was really good.
Well done. Thank you. Next is Agenda Item 6B for the approval of preliminary site development plans for the Long Bridge Corridor Project. I believe Mr. Wile is going to be presenting today.
Thank you very much.
Before you proceed, Madam Chair, this is Phil Mendelson. I'm going to step away and Evan Cash, my alternate, is going to fill in for the rest of the meeting for me.
Thank you all very much for joining us, Commissioner Mendelson, and welcome, Commissioner Cash.
Okay, can everyone see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair White, members of the Commission. The National Park Service, in coordination with the Virginia Passenger Rail Authority, or VPRA, has submitted preliminary plans to improve a portion of an existing railway corridor that crosses over the George Washington Memorial Parkway over the Potomac River and through East Potomac Park into the southwest commercial area of Washington DC. The corridor is an important link in the regional metropolitan area rail networks with a connection to Union Station, which you just heard about in the previous commission presentation. And here I would like to note that we have made revision to our staff EDR report that you should have in front of you. It's also been posted to our NCPC website. The previous version incorrectly noted that the new piers and bridge walls crossing the Potomac and through East Potomac Park would be constructed of granite stone. And that was incorrect. It will be, the piers and walls will be cladded with a large block ashlar cladding instead. So we did make that revision and and posted that to our website and circulated it to you all as well. And with that, I will continue on with my presentation. As a preliminary submission in fracana, we are considering planning issues like landscaping, the project surrounding context mitigation, views and view sheds, and the project's role in promoting walking and biking in the area. Here is the total 1.8 mile corridor improvement area shown here in yellow, which spans between Arlington, Virginia, near the Pentagon, and Lanfond Plaza in southwest Washington DC. The current project submission includes proposed site improvements to the National Park Service property that would be a part of the larger corridor expansion effort, which is highlighted here in purple. The Long Bridge Act of 2020 authorized the future conveyance of approximately 4.4 acres of land from the National Park Service to CSX, which is highlighted here in yellow. And then VPRA has an agreement to purchase the land for the proposed future rail corridor improvements that are part of the project before us here today. As shown here on this aerial view of the Potomac River, there are currently five bridges that cross the river in this area, including the historic existing Long Bridge as the southernmost span. And moving to the north upriver, the Charles R. Fenwick Bridge is used by Metro Rail's yellow line. And then three highway bridges further to the north of that, the Arlande Williams, Rochambeau, and George Mason Memorial Bridges. The project would connect, constructed to a new separate two-track span to the north of the existing Long Bridge outlined here in white, as well as a new pedestrian bicycle bridge to the north of that, which is outlined here in green. And here is a closer view of the two new river crossings, just just to the north of the historic Long Bridge. The existing Long Bridge is listed on the National Register for its historic character and is also contributing element to both the east and west Potomac Parks and George Washington Memorial Washington Memorial Parkway Historic Districts. As such, VPRA has adopted the design approach to approximate the historic features of the the existing Long Bridge, including its structure, material, and form. And this is in an effort to avoid potential adverse effects to the surrounding historic resources that that would arise from a less compatible type of bridge design. The existing Long Bridge is a through plate girder bridge with granite piers from Port Deposit, Maryland, comprised of twenty-two through girder spans and a distinctive double span swivel swing truss that is no longer operational. The bridge has a total length of approximately 2,530 feet and crosses over the GW Parkway, Mount Vernon Trail, Potomac River, and East Potomac Park. The current structure contains elements of the original 1904 bridge, as well as a number of additional improvements that were made in 1942 to accommodate the movement of heavier goods across the river. The current project is the product of a multi-year alternatives analysis study, starting in 2011, which assessed the number of potential river crossing alternatives. In addition, the District Department of Transportation and FRA led a comprehensive NEPA study that assessed two different action alternatives, eventually selecting alternative A as their preferred alternative, which included the construction of one new bridge across the Potomac and preservation of the existing historic Long Bridge. The study concluded with a signed record of decision in Section 106 Programmatic Agreement in 2020. The purpose of the corridor improvement project is to create greater railroad capacity between Virginia and the District of Columbia while alleviating the rail congested congestion caused by the existing two-track Long Bridge. And this slide shows the planned corridor improvement as part of VPRA's long-term effort to enhance passenger rail service throughout the state of Virginia. The National Park Service submission before us here today separates the project area into three geographic segments. And I will go through each area describing the existing conditions, the proposed site improvements, and note our comments, recommendations, and findings for the project as I proceed along the corridor from west to east. Starting in Virginia with Area 1, VPRA would construct a, construct a new separate bridge, starting from the west of the George Washington Memorial Parkway, close to Long Bridge Park. And the new bridge would cross over the Parkway, Mount Vernon Trail, and then continue east out over the Potomac River. Here you can see some photos of the existing Long Bridge over the GW Parkway at the top of the slide and the bridge crossing over Mount Vernon Trail on the bottom. And here I would like to note the arched through girder bridge spans that currently cross over the Parkway. And this differs from the straight through girder spans over the Mount Vernon Trail, which continue east for the remainder of the length of the bridge. The new bridge would replicate the arched through girder spans over the Parkway as shown in the top rendering and then transition to the straight through girder spans over the Mount Vernon Trail to mirror the existing historic Long Bridge structure. The new bridge piers, abutments, and walls would be constructed of concrete with a broken ashlar stone cladding to approximate the traditional Parkway materials. And this type of treatment would be used throughout the park with the exception of the two bridge piers closest to the Mount Vernon Trail, which would have columns to increase ground level visibility and safety along the trail and to also help preserve the open quality of the park and prevent a tunneling effect for trail users that would occur with the use of solid piers here. Here we can see a closer view of the broken ashlar cladding with its fine pointed stone shapes, coarse pointed accent accent finish, and with a mix of light tan, gold, brown, and blue shades, and occasional darker interspersed stones. And we include a finding in the Executive Director's recommendation that supports the use of the ashlar cladding based on its consistency with the character of the historic Parkway. As the new rail bridge continues to the east out over the Potomac River, the new bridge would approximate the existing Long Bridge's characteristic structure, material, and form with weathered steel through girders, similar pier spacing, and with large blocky piers, which would use large block ashlar cladding to approximate the existing bridge's larger granite block piers. The new bridge would align forty feet to the north of the existing Long Bridge, as shown here in this view looking west back toward Virginia. Staff, NCPC staff concurs with VPRA's overall design approach to approximate the existing bridge's features in an effort to avoid adverse visual impacts to the to the historic Bridge itself or surrounding historic district areas. And we note our support in the final Executive Director's recommendation. And while we do support V P R A's design approach, we request that V P R A continue to refine the Bridge's architectural detailing and consider modifying the size of the new piers to give them a more authentic look, similar to the existing Long Bridge piers today. And we include these requests as part of the Executive Director's recommendation. As the new Long Bridge Crossing would be one of seven bridges here in the future, with the Long Bridge's relative position compared to the other three nearby highway bridges, staff finds that the proposed new bridge design is appropriate, given its close proximity to the historic Long Bridge. And we note that this would not preclude the opportunity to think more broadly about redesigning the other highway bridges, should they be improved in the future. We believe the proposed new bridge design would complement the existing Long Bridge without overwhelming its recognizable historic character. And we note these points in the final Executive Director's recommendation. In addition to and parallel to the new Long Bridge rail crossing, the project would construct a new bicycle pedestrian bridge between Long Bridge Park in Arlington and East Potomac Park in the District with a direct connection to the Mount Vernon Trail. The new bridge would align approximately 25 feet to the north of the new rail bridge with a prefabricated truss design that is based on its necessary length, required clearances, and intended use. The new ped bike crossing was identified as four F mitigation for the project's required change in land use from federal parkland to the railway corridor infrastructure. And the new bridge would be the only freestanding bike ped crossing, only crossing, over the Potomac River within the District of Columbia, thereby serving as a valuable connection within the larger Arlington and D.C. multimodal networks. Here is a view of the new pedestrian bicycle bridge over the G W Parkway along the north side of the new rail bridge. And here are renderings of the new bridge ramp and stair connections to the Mount Vernon Trail on the left and in the middle. And the right-hand photo shows a view looking down the connector ramp toward the Mount Vernon Trail. Here are several ground views of the access ramp on the left and the bridge span over the Mount Vernon Trail. And here is the other side of the new pedestrian bicycle bridge as it lands in East Potomac Park adjacent to Ohio Drive West. The V P R A design team is in the process of studying several different color schemes for the new bridge. And here is the bridge, here the bridge is painted with standard Department, District Department of Transportation, light gray. And here is the bridge painted with federal standard red. And here is the third color known as federal standard brown. And these are several initial colors that V P R A is considering for the new pedestrian bicycle bridge. We note the proposed truss design is based on a number of engineering considerations. It's required length, clearances, and intended use. And these considerations were reflected in the previous Long Bridge environmental impact statement. However, staff believes that the design still appears to be overly complicated in large and scale with its many side members and vertical side heights, which may diminish the user experience for pedestrians and bicyclists, as well as other users of East Potomac Park, Mount Vernon Trail, and the G W Parkway. So staff encourages V P R A to consider ways to lighten the look of the bridge in coordination with N P S, Commission of Fine Arts, D C Spoh, the Virginia Department of Historic Resources, N C P C, and other stakeholder agencies with potential design modifications that include reducing the size of the bridge elements and painting the structure with a color that better blends in with background features. Finally, as the new bridge is meant to be an important pedestrian and bicycle connection across the river, we believe that V P R A should maximize its width to accommodate future travel with adequate space for bi-directional travel and passing movements. And we reflect this point in the final Executive Director's recommendation. And follow-up to my presentation here today, you will hear testimony that advocates for a wider 20-foot width. And one public comment points out the current proposed 14-foot width would effectively be reduced to eight feet of usable width, since bicyclists would tend to shy away from the Bridge's vertical side elements while riding. And so we hope that with this additional input, that V P R A can take another look at the width of the new bridge as they continue to develop this component of the project. Area Three at East Potomac Park includes the new rail bridge crossing over Interstate I-395, Ohio Drive East and West, and the Washington Channel, where the higher-capacity railway would continue east into Washington, D.C.'s southwest Commercial District, spanning over Main Avenue Southwest, which is not included in the current project submission. However, D dot and V P R A plan to submit this segment of the corridor project to N C P C for review at our upcoming September meeting, where we will review proposed site improvements to adjacent district and affected district property within our advisory capacity. Here are some photos of the existing rail road bridge today as it crosses over I-395, Ohio Drive East, and the Washington Channel. The new two-track bridge would cross over I-395 as a weathered steel-through-girder bridge with concrete column piers as shown here in this rendering. And the bridge walls would be constructed of concrete with large-block ashlar cladding to approximate the historic large-block granite stone that is used in the nearby existing historic Long Bridge structure. Here's the proposed new Ohio East Crossing as a new through-girder design with concrete parapet walls and a large-block ashlar-cladded solid pier and abutment walls. And this span would accommodate the new wider combined four-track width with two existing C S X tracks and two new V P R A tracks. And here is the new Washington Channel Crossing, again with the same through-girder design that we saw on the previous slide. And this span would also accommodate the future four-track width. V P R A is committed to constructing the new bridge through East Potomac Park with a design that is compatible with the historic character of the area. And as such, V P R A will continue to meet with stakeholder agencies, N C P C, C F A, N P S, D dot, and the D C Spoh and others to develop the project so that its elements are sensitive to the character of their surroundings. The new bridge is currently designed to comply with C S X standards and would allow the existing C S X tracks to continue to operate during the construction phase of the corridor improvements. Staff requests that V P R A consider several design, potential design modifications for the Ohio Drive East and Washington Channel crossings, including using concrete column piers to increase ground level visibility and to reduce the tunneling effect that may result from solid piers, reusing stone from the existing structures if possible, and detailing on the parapet walls to add more depth and visual interest. And we include these design considerations in the final Executive Director's recommendation. In terms of landscaping, the project would restore the area along the corridor with a mix of evergreen, flowering, and canopy trees to screen the new bridge and to help mitigate project impacts. And this plan is based on historic planting plans for the George Washington Memorial Parkway and East Potomac Park, as well as other relevant cultural landscape and National Register sources. Here are three views of the new rail bridge across East Potomac Park, which show the mix of trees in front of the Bridge's new retaining walls. Here is a cross-section of the future four-track bridge that illustrates its higher elevation, where the new bridge would be relative to the existing right-of-way and existing trees, and how V P R A would restore the trees adjacent to the future retaining walls. Moving to the Virginia side along the G W Parkway, we can see the proposed mix of new trees adjacent to the new rail and bike ped bridges. And here is a section of the new bridge crossing near the G W Parkway, which shows its comparative location to the existing tracks and with new landscaping to help screen the Bridge's retaining walls. Staff supports the use of evergreen, flowering, and canopy trees to help soften the appearance of the new infrastructure on National Park Service property, as well as the effort to base the project's proposed new tree locations and landscaping on relevant historic planting plans, cultural landscapes, and other reference documents. And we note these points in the final Executive Director's recommendation. In addition, we recommend that V P R A use ornamental canopy trees near the bicycle pedestrian entry-exit areas and vehicle parking areas to provide visual interest and shade, and to locate the new trees so that they would allow for intermittent views of the new stone-cladded walls and also allow for outward views from the railway corridor. And finally, we recommend that V P R A explore ways to incorporate pollinators into the proposed landscape design pursuant to federal policies. Regarding the Bridges' new, the New Bridge's retaining walls, V P R A would use two different types of ashlar cladding for the new bridge piers and walls with broken ashlar cladding used on the Virginia side along the G W Parkway to reflect its traditional historic materials and large-block ashlar cladding in the rest of the project area to approximate the block here, a look of the existing historic granite stone. And we note this in the final corrected Executive Director's recommendation for you, as the previous version of the E D R incorrectly stated that V P R A would construct the new bridge walls and piers with the granite stone. So here is the information that we are requesting in the final project submission, in addition to the finalized plans to N C P C, landscape plans that include a detailed tree removal inventory and future tree replacement locations and a planting schedule, lighting strategy and plans for the new rail and pedestrian bicycle bridges, information on how the project would comply with current federal flood risk management guidelines, and whether this addresses the standards identified in Executive Order 13690, and a signage plan for the new pedestrian bicycle Potomac River Bridge Crossing as well. And with that, that concludes my presentation. And I will not read through the final Executive Director's recommendation, since I have already covered each point already through the course of my presentation. And after the conclusion of our scheduled upcoming testimony, I would like to mention that we have four project representatives here with us today who are available to answer any questions that the Commission may have, including our colleagues Tammy Stidham from the National Park Service, Kate Youngbluth, who is the Director of Planning for V P R A, Shirleyen Cleveland, who serves as the Senior Director for the Long Bridge Project, and Mark Holgan, who is the Project Consultant and a Vice President, Regional Transportation Director at V H B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weil. Do any of the Commissioners have questions for Mr. Weil or the project representatives?
I actually had a question.
Commissioner Cash.
So in response, I noticed there was a letter from the Mandarin Oriental Hotel that mentioned concern over the construction, which isn't so much my question, but also mentioned concerns over the current pedestrian bridge that links the Portals project over to the other side of Main Avenue. And I hadn't seen any of the slides or in the deck any real detail there. So could you maybe tease out a little bit of what the concern is? Like, is it going to require tearing down the existing bridge or what's going on there?
Sure, absolutely. So first of all, one of the testifiers today, Mr. Grig, he is a representative of the Portals Property Development. He represents Republic Properties, and he will speak to the bridge. I think, I believe, one of their concerns is they are concerned about the project sequencing. They absolutely would like to see the new, their new bridge fully reconstructed before the existing bridges is demolished. Basically, now it's, it's within the limit of disturbance for the widened four-track right-of-way. And so that has to be demolished, and V P R A does have plans to reconstruct it kind of a little further to the south, I believe, along Main Avenue. So it would still provide a connection to the Portals' development. However, they want to make sure that's done. The new bridge is fully constructed before the old bridge is demolished. And we actually will be covering that segment of the property in September at the Commission meeting.
Okay, that's helpful. So it is a tear-down of the old bridge necessitated by the new train tracks?
Sure. And if you will indulge me, I do have a graphic here that shows in Plan View, Main Avenue. And here is the new four-track widened bridge over Main Avenue. And this is the existing Portals pedestrian-only bridge today. And so that would be demolished, and the V P R A would be constructing a staircase and an access ramp up to the new bridge that would cross over Main Avenue.
And you said that's going to be a separate presentation that we have in the next few months as a?
V P R A and D dot will be, yeah, will be submitting that section of the project to N C P C for review at our September meeting next, or in two months.
Okay, that's helpful, and I'll look forward to the testimony coming up.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Any further questions? Hearing none. We do have correspondence on this project from Nicholas Dubord, Cynthia Palmer, Melissa Riggio, and Chris Slatt. In addition, yesterday, the Commission received 45 public comment letters, all in support of a greater width for the bike ped bridge. In addition, we have two people signed up to speak today. First up is Andrea Cowley. Ms. Cowley, you will have three minutes to provide your remarks. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Andrea Cowley. I'm a former NASA engineer, so not really into bridges usually, but make an exception this time. Yes, the 14-inch or the 14-foot deck, I did think would be quite a bit too small. It can be split evenly into two seven-foot lanes, but bicycle handlebars and actually also wheelchair widths are about 800 millimeters or 2 foot 8 inches. And since the siding rail is 42 inches from the deck, the cyclists have to cycle away from the railing to avoid clipping it and becoming injured. So you might see much more inward stance than usual, especially among novice cyclists or people riding heavy cycles like the cabbie share bikes. Pedestrians also don't tend to walk directly against a bridge rail, so that does take up more space. So the pest, the pessimeal passing distance of one bicycle in each direction and then two passing cyclists, that gives you about six inches of space, which is about the same as two credit cards laid together, which can be a little daunting at high speeds going towards to each other. So 20 inches, 20 feet is a much better width, as it brings us up to 18 inches of space between passing traffic in either direction. The second point is that the bridge deck rail height, which I noticed was, I can't tell if it's completely separated from the truss structure or not, but it is shown in the drawings as being 42 inches high, which is about, which is fine if you're standing. But I went and measured my bicycle seat and my center of mass, and that puts me above the the safety rail. And I have a partner who's nine inches taller than me, so her, her safety factor would just be completely gone. She would be going into the truss structure rather than the rail. So I would propose to consider adding either some sort of rail structure that is, that goes from the floor to the top or at least reaches to at least like eight feet or something like that to account for the increased center of mass of cyclists. Additionally, that deck rail is perfectly vertical, which doesn't allow you full utilization of the deck space if you have something overhanging, like a bicycle that has, you know, handlebars that hang over the side. You could utilize more deck space by bringing the rails out at a 45-degree angle before bringing them up vertically. I will also say that the bridge is placed between two very loud other bridges. If there's trains going on all the other bridges at the same time, I do worry that it would exceed safe noise exposure limits without hearing protection. The Woodrow Wilson Memorial Bridge has clear barriers in place, at least on the Virginia side. And it's, they're amazing at blocking out the sound of traffic there. And I would really love to see something like that included on this bridge structure. A clear panel does double duty in that it allows people to see through and see all the views. It doesn't, it doesn't get in the way of the bridge aesthetics, but it's also very, very protective.
It's three minutes.
I have one final item, if you would grant me just a little more time. Finally, is the east landing. There is a double 90-degree turn. I feel this is not very conducive to safety and traffic flow. I would recommend to visit the Mount Vernon Trail at the Theodore Roosevelt Island Parking. There's another double 90-degree turn like this. And a heavy bicycle, or if you're carrying a load, we have a lot of people now I see bicycling around with, with two or three children. And a heavy bicycle, or if you're carrying a load, um, we have a lot of people now I see bicycling around with, with, with two or three children. Um, or with groceries. Um, it's very difficult to handle that, that turn and then a flat and then a turn. Uh, back up a uh, slope. Um, but it appears that there is sufficient space in the parking lot where the bike ped bridge lands. To have a full length uh, one to twenty climb without a bend. So I, I would recommend either removing the bend entirely uh, to allow for better traffic flow. Or changing it to be a, a curve uh, instead of a, a double ninety-degree turn. So I will stop there.
Thank you so much. Uh, do the commissioners have any questions? Hearing none. Thank you again for your testimony. Um, earlier I mentioned we had two people signed up to speak. We actually have three, so please forgive me. Next is Bernard Byrne. Mr. Byrne, you will have three minutes for your remarks.
Yes, hello. Um, I live in Arlington and I cycle frequently to Washington, the various bridges across the Potomac River. The, the, in illustration in the uh, Rabeli Authority submission shows that a bicycle pedestrian visual at both ramps and staircases. That will connect this bridge to the Mount Vernon Trail within the George Washington World Parkway onto Ohio Drive within East Potomac Park. These connections will be located inside environmentally sensitive areas within or very close to the Potomac Rivers Resource Protection Area, RPA. They are also incompatible with views of these national parks. The protecting for, for testing state water sheds new construction near and within the RPAs must be closely monitored and limited to the greatest extent feasible. Such limitations are also necessary within Saurica natural areas in the national parks, including the George Washington National Parkway and East Potomac Park. In 1987, uh, the sidewalks on the Key Bridge were one to ten feet. The bicycle pedestrian bridge on the Wilson, Woodrow Wilson Bridge, which opened in two thousand nine, two oh nine, is twelve feet wide. The, the pads on both of these bridges are wide enough for safer pedestrian use by cyclists and spread and um, by other motor scooter units, operators even during peak hours. I've experienced all these bridges frequently. I don't have problems on them. Uh, the pads on, um, wider pads and, and are hazardous. And as users often spread out to walk, to walk and to cycle side by sides. And the wide widths encourage cyclists to speed, especially on downhill slopes as those ramps. This is dangerous. Uh, there is no real need for both wide ramps and wide staircases to connect the bridge and a, and a, and a street within this RPA national parks. Few people will use the stairs, if any, uh, they're getting with ramps. In addition, of course, a lot of people are going to use the George Mason Bridge. Uh, the, the ramps and the, and stairs will each increase its stormwater runoff in Potomac River and will detract from the views of the river and the parks. I therefore ask you to please vote to one. Recommend the removal of the stairs containing the bicycle pedestrian bridge and the Mount Vernon Trail and Ohio Drive. Those stairs are simply redundant and no one will use them. Reduce the width of the ramps, connecting, connecting the bridge and the trail and drive to thirteen feet. Uh, again, because of that slope and people speeding down the slope and people walking by the side, that is dangerous. That is all that is necessary to produce, produce ride safe and convenient connections between the bridge and the drive. If the, however, if implemented, the present of design would be a classic example of overbuilding and overengineering within the, the Washington area's national parks, especially that staircase, which simply is not needed. And so take, take no other point from this, um, get rid of the staircase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Uh, do the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Byrne? Hearing no questions, I will move on to Stephen Greg. Mr. Greg, you will have three minutes for your remarks. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, I'm Steve Greg, CEO and Chief Development Officer of Republic Properties Corporation. Republic and its principles are general partners of PDA, which developed the portals project. I'm also a Director and Officer of the Portals Public Improvement Association, which I represent. Which represents all six parcel owners that comprise the portals, private property. And operate the common space which the portals provides to its property owners and residents and visitors of our capital. RPC and its affiliates are owners of four of the six properties. The portals project is a gateway landmark project to the city, as you know. We reclaimed a public monumental elevated Maryland Avenue by building it over the tracks and a major monumental circle. In a series of public landscape plazas that provide access not only to the residents and tenants of the portals. But also the public in providing overviews and access to the tidal basin and the southwest waterfront. We also provide connections for the many visitors and residents moving from the mall to not only the waterfront, but also the tidal basin. The public, uh, the portals public improvement association owns that pedestrian bridge. We improved it, providing landscaped edges and a pathway that's wide enough for people to, to walk their bicycles. Or, or move across in wheelchairs from main, across Main Avenue to the tidal basin and the waterfront. Walkways that uh, are part of their, our system down there near the portals. We have about one point six million square feet of commercial office and government space. A Mandarin Oriental Hotel, three hundred and seventy-three apartment residents. Um, are accommodated in our first building and a final building of three hundred and fifty-six additional residential units are going to be developed at the portals. Starting later this fall. Um, the Fourteenth Street Bridge and Main Avenue and the tidal basin, this whole general area is a very important and complicated knuckle in the city. It has significance from a symbolic sense and it's really a gateway area into the city. And it also unfortunately or fortunately is a transportation hub between Fourteenth Street, the railroads and the vehicular traffic that connects in the Main Avenue. The long bridge will have a significant impact, not only on the PPIA and the property owners of the, and residents and tenants of the portals, but also the general pop, public. We've written comments and spoken with NCPC staff. You have comments from, which are provided by one of our property owners, the Mandarin, which included a letter that I wrote to CFA. And we've met with planners of the long bridge program over the last several years at various times and expressed our concerns with regard to the impacts as we began to understand the evolving plans. We realize these are in a preliminary stage, but they're clear enough to understand that they will have huge impacts. Our concerns include the contemplated product, not only in its completion, but also the impacts during its phasing and construction. On not only the portals, but the very critical surrounding areas. These include disruption of connectivity of vehicular and pedestrian traffic. The impacts of noise and vibration and the visual impacts of widened tracks and structures uh, associated with them. We've made suggestions. I, I have only a few moments more. We've made suggestions as we've become aware of the plans to develop the bridge. We hope and anticipate that these impacts will be mitigated and removed and we trust that NCPC will do its part to use its authority and position to encourage improvements that will inure to the benefit of the government. DC residents and workers and the visitors to our nation's capital. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Greg. Do commissioners have any questions for Mr. Greg? Uh, hearing none, that concludes the public testimony regarding this project. I'll now open it up to commission for discussion. So if everyone would please turn on their webcams. Uh, I will start with Commissioner Cozart and then go in around Robin format using our normal seating order. Please keep your webcams cams on during discussion. Commissioner Cozart.
Uh, thank you. I don't have any um, questions or comments at this moment. Just want to really thank the staff for a really uh, great presentation that made it clear what um, the plans are and what are the things um, still left to be um, resolved, those key details. So uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon.
Yeah, thank you. Good presentation. Thanks from the um, uh, Stafford, putting this all together. Obviously a critical linkage and, you know, continued development of mass transit throughout the uh, east coast, not just in the Washington DC area. So the overall project, I've got no comments on, um, as one of the cyclists, I guess, on the uh, the commission, I got a couple of comments. Um, on the cycle bridge. Um, I don't have a whole lot of objections to the, the size and the design, I, I think is pointed out by one of the members of public who commented that the height's important. I suspect the height's okay, but frankly, that's gonna that gets to some of the issues that staff had in terms of the, the visual of that truss. I suspect it's necessary. What I do am concerned about is the, at the endpoints. Uh, the bridge at both ends, certainly the way they've tied it into the, the uh, parkway, uh, bike trail is critical. Because right now it's very hard to get to, you know, the Fourteenth Street Bridge and a bicycle across, uh, you know, connection side from Virginia. So that's a major improvement as it ties into Crystal City through the uh, the Long Bridge Park, which will increase the traffic. So I'm concerned about a ninety-degree um, uh, terminus there. I'm also concerned about the terminus at the uh, district side there on Ohio Street. There's no pedestrian really. Um, facilities on that side of Ohio Drive where they have it terminating, it comes to a T itself there, so. Um, I'd almost recommend to take a look at carrying as a bridge across Ohio Drive and maybe down into that parking lot to tie into existing uh, um, pedestrian passageways. Don't know whether fourteen feet's the right number or not, but certainly as the other uh, uh, public member testified. That may actually serve to somewhat constrain speeds of bicycles. Uh, that may be an issue. Uh, I don't want Fourteenth Street Bridge or a fair amount of traffic even today. Thanks, Over.
Thank you, Commissioner May.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so uh, I'll make a few comments. The uh, first of all, you know, we've been working with VPRA for a very long time on this project. Uh, and the design development has already come a long way, but it's still got a ways to go before it's really uh, complete their uh, details having to do with the design of, of piers and planting and things like that. I think that needs some, uh, some further development and we are working through that uh, with VPRA, um, their design team. The uh, the, the new bike and pedestrian bridge is a critical component of the project. I mean, that's one of the reasons why we were able to support this in the first place, uh, creating that connection across the river. Improving a um, a, a vital connection for uh, bicycle, for example. Um, is right now the connection across the Fourteenth Street Bridge is not very good. Uh, and so this will be a, a huge improvement in that regard. Uh, I do think that there are a number of the details there that still need to be worked out. Um, some of those were highlighted in the testimony we heard today. I do think some of those uh, issues. Are already addressed in the design or will be. Uh, not everything is clear from the amount of information that's been presented today. Uh, there is further development, I think, that addresses some of the safety concerns um, with the design. Uh, and um, I will say also, I mean, this is, this is very important to us, not just for providing the commuter route, but providing a way for our visitors of the George Washington World Parkway to connect to National Water, Royal Parks. Uh, on the other side, East Potomac Park. So um, it is, it is a, a big, big benefit from our perspective. It is a, a major um, project in support of the uh, Not sure what was going on there. Um, anyway.
Gone away.
Yeah. Uh, anyway, uh, it's, it's a component of the, or it supports the, the National Capitol Region, National Park Service paved trail plan that we developed many years ago. And um, we are be forward to further development and making sure that this works for everyone uh, who's involved in it. Um, I don't know, I mean, I, I, maybe uh, somebody from VPRA wants to address concerns that came up today. I'm not sure that there are specific answers, but um, you may want to give an opportunity to um, uh, Kate to, to respond to that. Um.
That would be great. I would welcome it.
Uh, or, or Shirley, I'm not sure who's the best.
Yeah, Shirley, we'll take this one. Shirley.
Okay, so um, which concern, you want to start with a bike path? Um, so we are looking at the, go ahead, sorry.
With the safety concerns, the uh, the ninety-degree turns, things like that.
Um, actually, Mark, do you want to talk about the ninety-degree turn? Cause I, I know we've looked at that, but you'd be most familiar with um, where we stand. Mark, are you there?
Yes, I am. I think I got my video working, but I don't see it. Anyways, uh, yeah, we, we've received the comments and, and we'll take another look. We have developed the details based on what we thought was best practices and, and uh, and really looked at a lot of design criteria for, to address all the comments that have already brought up today, but happy to take those back and discuss more with the project team and um, and react and adapt appropriately to the design.
We've also been looking at impacts of widening um, the bridge, you know, based on the comment and the many comments that we've received. And so that will, that will take some study, so we will get back to you though with uh, what we are able to accommodate. Obviously, the corridor is very narrow. We have to fit two bridges in between an existing, you know, rail bridge and then Womata's existing yellow line bridge. So we'll see what's possible, um, and then we'll have, we'll report back to you. Um, and regarding uh, Mr. Greg's testimony, we are meeting with them. We've uh, we have our third, well, I think fourth meeting this year. Uh, three since I've started in March. We have another meeting with them tomorrow to go over um, their concerns, you know, impacts uh, to the project. And we will do our best to, you know, uh, address all of those in the final design.
Thank you. I don't have any other comments. I appreciate uh, VPRA's stepping up and trying to address some of these concerns. Let folks know that all these things are being uh, considered and will be addressed.
We're only a fifteen percent design.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Thank you for the uh, comments. Uh, Commissioner Argo. I'm going to ask our technical team if there's any suggestion for how to address this.
I'm, I'm glad it wasn't just me that got hit by that.
No, uh, we'll try to unmute Commissioner Argo again. It was her something on her end that was giving us the reverb, so. Um, it, it perhaps what we could do is just pop to the next commissioner and we'll take a look and if we can figure this out. Uh, we'll come up with a tech strategy for it.
Perfect. Uh, well, Commissioner Argo will move on to Commissioner Wright. While they address the technical issue, we'll come back to you. So Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, I just have one, I mean, it, it, what everyone else has said, but also um, Michael, can you take us to what was slide thirty-five in the original deck?
Sure.
So. It, um, or thereabouts. It shows several people have commented on this, but this really struck me. Not as a, whoa, that, back up, back up. Hold on, keep going. One more. Well, that's a good one. Okay. Can you blow up this slide? So, so the bottom image, uh, the, what I'm getting at is that it's a study in contrast. Aesthetically, this thing is, is too heavy-handed in some places. And then what really struck me were these little weirdo, you know, um, very slight um, um, fences. They look like those kind of temporary fences that are set up at events. And then, and, and they look particularly frail and sort of silly. Um, uh, in contrast to these heavy trusses and I, and I, and I, I would just urge that you think. Again, I think Commissioner McMahon um, mentioned how these things, I have no objection to the bridge forms themselves and the trusses, the truss work is, is beautiful in some ways. But, but the contrast with how, how the, each, each um, bridge lands on both banks is really disconcerting and I think could use a little, that's another good one. The one I had in mind was this, this lower right hand, also right, where you see the, the staircase. Um, and ha, and these very sort of um, dainty um, um, pickets. And I don't know, it, it, they almost, again, look like those temporary event fences which conjure up all kinds of associations. It, they almost again look like those temporary event fences which conjure up all kinds of associations that are unpleasant. So I, I would urge that you think through this a little bit, how, how each, um, each structure, um. Hits the ground and the contrast between, um, the various, the trusses, the peers are fine. I, I don't have. And I don't, I think the color is, I mean, I actually didn't, I learned something today. I didn't know there was a federal brown and a federal. Red and a DC gray. So I, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not particularly. Um, picky about any of that. This is just the, the one thing that struck me kind of uniformly throughout the presentation that. There's a certain amount of discordant, um, um. Aesthetics to the, the, where the, each of the bridges land on the ground on either bank. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
I'm okay. I had nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
Uh, just a few things. So I do, now, now that I've heard the testimony and gone back and looked at those images we were just looking at of the landing on the Virginia side. I will say I won't really see the point so much of the stairs because it seems to unnecessarily elongate the bridge just to then. Go back when it could just gently land over there. Um, so I'd urge looking at that because I just don't see that they would ever get used because it's actually. A longer walk both ways and it's really high up. Like those are a lot of stairs going up. So, and I, I agree with everything else that's been said about the pedestrian bridge and I appreciate that, that you're only at, at what fifteen percent design. You'll be going back and looking at that. And also on the, the DC side, um, just to, to the questions that I had earlier, and I know that we'll be looking at this now separately. But I really would encourage between now and when we hear this and as plans go forward, that we really address the concerns of this bridge. Uh, this pedestrian bridge connecting the portals, um, to the other side, because I mean, that's a, a major DC development. It's a, an amenity that was built there. By that project in two thousand and four. So I just want to make sure that those folks are happy to the greatest extent possible. So as we move to the, that next review. Um, I'll look forward to, to that. Um, and then finally, I just want to acknowledge that this is kind of a strange project because we have. Uh, Virginia facilities that will be very much coming into, to DC as soon as you cross the river out of Virginia into the river, you're in DC. So. That's an interesting project that I understand will have some, some swaps of, of some land or some purchases of land, especially on the DC side. And I just hope that, that as there are issues that are raised on the DC side from either our planners or D dot and all that, that, uh, that. The Virginia pastor railway folks were really hard to, to make sure that the DC people are as, as happy as possible. So. Um, that's really all the comments, but I, I think that it is a, a great project moving forward. It's a vital transit, transportation link for the district. And I think that adding the pedestrian facilities and the bike facilities really adds a lot to this. So thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg.
Hi, yeah, thank you. Um, as somebody who rides the fourteenth street bridge almost every day, I'm excited for another option to get me across the river. Um, and I look forward to future iterations as we go forward. Thank you for the presentation and, um, I look forward to more.
Thank you. Let's go back to Commissioner Argo.
Uh, we are in contact with Commissioner Argo if she can go ahead and, uh, she's rejoining right now. And hopefully that will solve the issue. But if it takes any length of time, uh.
Let's, um, let's give her another moment. I see that Commissioner McMahon has, oh, there you are. Commissioner Argo, while we have you.
And just in time to say, I have no comments at this.
Well, thank you so much. Um, I see Commissioner McMahon has his hand raised and then, uh, Commissioner May. So Commissioner McMahon.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Argo. So, uh, that's good. Commissioner May and I will take the additional time, uh, from, from you. Um, just, um, maybe VPRA can address this issue of the stairs on the Virginia side, or perhaps Arlington County. It looks like Commissioner May may have even more better information with his, uh, daytime job. But as I take a look at just, uh, and you look at those comments on the bridge, the pedestrian bridge, uh, keep in mind that, uh. If you are a pedestrian coming from the Long Bridge area, coming up the, that pedestrian bridge, starting down at the new rec, um, uh, recreation center. This is actually a fitness center that Arlington County built. You're not going to walk all the way, you know, across into over Potomac River to make that turn and walk back down to the bicycle ramp. You're going to want to take those stairs going down to the parkway, uh, you know, multi-use trail, which is heavily used by pedestrians in addition to the cyclists. That's all. Thanks.
I, I was essentially going to make the same point. What is not clear from the, the visualizations that are shown in the presentation is that. The stairway is, you know, will be very convenient for the next component of a bridge because that grid, ped bridge continues across the George Washington Memorial Park ready. It's a long bridge. So, yeah, I mean, there will, it will be used by people who are walking. Um, if you're on a bike, you'd have to go all the way down to double back, but, um, it's not, we, we can't get by, I think, without, without that stairway.
And I'll just say, I'm now going back and looking at a different angle and it, it makes more sense from a different angle.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Cleveland, did you want to comment on that?
Um, I was basically going to say the same thing, so.
Great. Everyone's in concurrence. Um, are there any further comments or questions? I, I would just like to add that it, it's a, it's interesting. We have this significant infrastructure project, um, a few today on the agenda. And a very important one for both rail capacity and as everyone has noted, the, the pedestrian and biking capacity. There are a lot of different segments to these improvements, a lot of considerations, uh, the impact on the portals, the historic preservation. Um, and while we're in this design phase and only at fifteen percent, um, it does seem the overall approach is going in the right direction, but. As we saw with the last presentation, these details are, are really important and I appreciate and encourage VPRA to. Keep looking at this question about the proposed width and design of the new bike ped bridge. And I'm, I'm very sensitive to the dynamics of building trails. Uh, that's what I do with my day job and. Have a hundred and thirty miles open to the public and widths of trails and what's beside those trails is a really important consideration. So I. Appreciate you taking a, a strong look at this. There's a lot of debate in this world about if you widen them, people will go faster. If they're too narrow, you'll have, uh, more accidents, but you know, thinking about mobility. And pedestrian cyclists, people in wheelchairs, it's, it's a really important thing to get right when you, you have such a constrained space. I also wanted to echo what Commissioner Wright was saying about the, at least how the renderings come across with that very light touch of a rail. Um, when you're coming off of the bridge and you're adjacent to moving cars. Um, I, I do encourage you to take a stronger look at that from, um, a pedestrian safety point of view. Not, not just the aesthetic, but the, the safety aspects that are involved there. Um, so it, it's all about the user experience. It's great that we have so many users on our commission. To give you firsthand experiences to, as to what that is like. So, um, I appreciate again the, the thoughtfulness of our commission members. And the coordination to date and to the staff for working through this and frankly, to the forty-five people who sent in letters and our, uh, folks who showed up to give testimony because I think. Community engagement, we are always advocating for that. So it's really heartening to see, um, this kind of response to this project. So if there are no further comments or questions, is there a motion to approve the preliminary site development plans for the Long Bridge Corridor project?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Ms. Custer, can you please confirm the motion in the second and take the vote by roll call?
Sure. Uh, the motion was made by Commissioner May, the second by Commissioner McMahon. With that, Commissioner Kozar? Yes. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Beautiful. Uh, Chair White?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is carried. Uh, the next item on our agenda is to approve comments on Arlington National Cemetery's draft real property master plan. Uh, Lee Webb will be presenting, um, having some, uh, connection issues. So we won't see him on camera, but we will be hearing his voice as he goes through his. Uh, presentation. So welcome, Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Chair White. And I can assure you, I still look like my headshot and I am wearing a jacket and tie. Um, so good afternoon, Chair White and members of the commission. Arlington National Cemetery has submitted a draft master plan for commission comment. The commission last approved a master plan for ANC in twenty fifteen. ANC is a six hundred and thirty-nine acre cemetery located in Arlington County, Virginia, surrounded by major roadways. Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall, developed areas of Arlington County and lands under this jurisdiction of the National Park Service. As a reminder, the commission approved two expansions to the cemetery in the last few years. The millennium, millennium expansion was approved in twenty fifteen with construction completed in twenty nineteen. And the southern expansion received its final approval from the commission in twenty twenty-one. Both of these expansions will provide ANC much needed burial capacity. I will also note that in twenty twenty, a land swap occurred between the park service and ANC in which the land associated with the approach into ANC. Via the Memorial Avenue to the Women and Military Service for America Memorial or WMSA. Including the road and area on both sides of the hedgerow was transferred from NPS's jurisdiction to ANC. ANC had used the land under a memorandum of agreement, but now it is fully under ANC's jurisdiction. Today, approximately four hundred thousand veterans and their eligible dependents are buried at ANC. Service members from every one of America's major wars, from the Revolutionary War to today's conflicts are interned at the cemetery. ANC hosts over three million visitors annually and almost six thousand funerals. The cemetery staff is comprised of roughly two hundred federal workers, eighty military personnel, and up to three hundred contract support staff. At the draft review for a master plan for a facility such as the cemetery, the commission should be focused on issues such as land use and impacts to historic or cultural resources. Staff analyzed this draft using guidance in the comprehensive plan, particularly those related to the parks and open space, preservation, historic features. And federal transportation elements. Staff finds the proposed draft master plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The purpose of the master plan is to assist ANC in addressing the changes that have occurred since the last master plan was approved in twenty fifteen. And to address new challenges and opportunities for the cemetery. This draft plan does not propose any additional expansions of the cemetery outside its current boundaries. The proposed projects identified in the draft are notional with potential locations identified, but no specific massing scale or designs included at this time. The draft master plan was informed by four primary goals identified by ANC to frame the discussion of future projects. Those include maximizing available space to extend the life of the cemetery. Modernize and expand existing facilities and infrastructure to enhance the cemetery operations. Enhance the visitor experience while maintaining the iconic image of the cemetery and maintaining a safe and secure operating environment. The draft plan divides the cemetery into four area development plans or ADPs, which we'll use for discussion. They include the entry corridor, the memorial amphitheater. The service complex and the Meeks Tanner area near Arlington House. A fifth area is the soldiers and airmen's home national cemetery, which is actually located within the District of Columbia. When it's included in discussion under this draft as it is under ANC's purview and maintenance. I will go through each of the ADPs noting proposed projects called out in the draft plan and include our recommendations. In preparing the draft master plan, ANC undertook a thorough process to identify problems and challenges. Particularly related to the visitor experience and pedestrian safety, as well as addressing pedestrian and vehicular conflicts. The first area we'll look at is the area development plan one, which is the entry corridor. And this area includes the Memorial Avenue, the main entrance to the cemetery, the Welcome Center. WMSA Memorial, the visitor parking garage and the administration building. Under this draft, most of the proposed future projects involving new structures are located in ADP one. And include projects to address, to excuse me, to address pedestrian and vehicular conflicts and enhancing the visitor experience. It also includes security related projects such as a new standalone. Pedestrian security facility to the east of the Welcome Center, a new vehicular screening facility along Memorial Avenue. And the visit, and one at the visitor parking garage. Other projects identified for ADP one include potential new columbaria located in flex space areas north of Memorial Avenue. For ADP one, staff supports the applicant's efforts to identify projects that improve the visitor experience. Security and eliminate existing pedestrian and vehicular conflicts. The new visitor screening facility east of the Welcome Center will allow the Welcome Center itself to better function as a place for visitors to seek information on the cemetery. The new drive into the visitor parking garage and the vehicular screening will help eliminate the existing pedestrian and vehicular conflicts around the Welcome Center that exists. Staff supports the applicant's intent to reconfigure the tram space, excuse me, the tram plaza and queuing area to further enhance the visitor experience and avoid pedestrian vehicular conflicts. However, staff does find that proposed vehicular screening on Memorial Avenue is problematic as it permit, as any permanent structure would impact the historic character of Memorial Avenue. Therefore, staff recommends that the applicant explore options for mobile vehicular screening on Memorial Avenue. That are not permanent and do not negatively impact the historic character and the view shed of Memorial Avenue. Including fully mobile units that can be removed when the, uh, when the cemetery is closed. In addition, staff finds that the applicant has proposed these flex area spaces to the north of Memorial Avenue. Behind the existing fencing and holly hedgerows that could accommodate various facilities, possibly new columbaria. These areas north and south of Memorial Avenue behind the holly hedges are documented contributing landscape features. For the Arlington Memorial Bridge and Environment National Register Historic District. Therefore, staff recommends that the applicant avoid any citing any future columbaria or any new structures in the areas identified as flex space. And here is a picture showing the area north of Memorial Avenue. As any development may impact the mature oak trees and the character of these landscape features. Staff recommends that the applicant identify other areas in ADP one that may serve as desired flex space and may be more appropriate for future developments such as needed columbaria. The next area we will discuss is ADP two, which is the memorial amphitheater ADP. Which is, covers an area in the southwestern part of the cemetery. It contains the memorial amphitheater. And reception building, the tomb of the unknown soldier and considerable burial space, particularly to the south and west of memorial amphitheater. And also includes, of course, the grounds around the amphitheater. Proposed projects in ADP two are primarily to improve mobility and ADA access and the visitor experience as well as interior space we configure in. Through reconfigurations at the amphitheater to improve functionality. Therefore, staff recommends that the commission supports the rehabilitation projects and improvements in visitor experience, including enhanced wayfinding. New visitor comfort stations and sidewalk access and enhanced ADA and mobility access, particularly at the memorial amphitheater. The next ADP is the service complex and the area for the service complex ADP actually spans the entire cemetery. Which makes it different from the other ADPs we've discussed. Staff notes that the existing service complex adjacent to the southern expansion in this area shown here. Will be demolished to provide additional space for burials for the cemetery. The purpose of this ADP is to examine the broader reassignment of the service complex functions across the cemetery. Staff finds that the draft plan identifies areas to improve functions of necessary service and construction needs. While recognizing the limitations of space within the cemetery. while recognizing the limitations of space within the cemetery. In particular, the plan proposes to convert the North Parcel, which is in this area, which is a 2.3 acre parcel under ANC's jurisdiction, adjacent to Joint Base Myers Henderson Hall, into a permanent service satellite. Due to this location and potential for full screening for many visitors, staff supports locating new laydown and storage yards in the north part of Parcel as it is a location separated from visitor-accessed areas. In addition, due to the solemn character of the cemetery, staff recommends the applicant ensure that any other new areas for service functions and laydown areas identified are not located within cemetery areas with sensitive view sheds or adjacent to burial sites. The next area is ADP Four, which is termed the Meeks Tanner ADP, located in northwest portion of the cemetery. It lies west of the President John F. Kennedy Gravesite and Arlington House, at which Arlington House serves as one of the primary guest destinations for visitors to the cemetery. This area also includes Sherman Drive, which is immediately to the west of Arlington House, Meeks Drive, the James Tanner Amphitheater, the Receiving Vault, the old Administration Building. Also cited are Buildings 313 and 314, which we'll discuss. For ADP, the plan includes opportunities to improve the visitor experience and safety with wayfinding, visitor stations, improved sidewalk access, expanded tram stops, and traffic improvements. Staff supports the opportunities to improve the visitor experience and safety within the cemetery where feasible and appropriate and in areas controlled by ANC. However, staff notes that some of the proposed projects in this ADP may conflict with existing National Park Service operations and cultural landscape features and would require NPS review and approval. In their comments, NPS noted that Building 313 was already under their jurisdiction prior to the 2020 land swap, with only Building 314 coming under their jurisdiction in 2020. As such, the draft master plan should be updated to remove any references to these buildings, if not under ANC's jurisdiction. Staff also requests that the applicant coordinate with NPS regarding strategies to address pedestrian safety and desired new walkways in the areas adjacent to Arlington House that may conflict with NPS's existing programs. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, the draft plan does include the Soldiers and Airmen's Home National Cemetery, which is located in the district as it is under ANC's purview. It is one of the oldest national cemeteries in the United States, containing 16 acres, and is located immediately northeast of the Armed Forces Retirement Home. Future projects identified in the draft master plan include the rehabilitations of buildings such as the Superintendent's Lodge and finding more active uses for these historic buildings. Therefore, staff supports the applicant's efforts to maintain and rehabilitate the historic buildings located at the Soldier and Airmen's Home National Cemetery while identifying future functional uses for these buildings, including possibilities for visitor amenities. Finally, in respect to transportation needs under this plan, staff finds that ANC functions differently from other federal installations related to transportation management, and its transportation management plan should reflect its mission, while noting that this plan does not add any additional parking and the bulk of vehicular access is from visitors to the cemetery. Staff commends the applicant in identifying a key goal of the draft master plan is to reduce the pedestrian and vehicular conflicts along Memorial Avenue and within the cemetery. Staff recommends that the applicant continue to identify ways to improve and support bus and tram use and the metro for workers and visitors alike. Finally, staff recommends that the applicant explore opportunities to improve the tram service from the metro station to the Welcome Center to assist visitors with mobility issues. In conclusion, staff recommends that the Commission comments favorably on the goals and overall approach presented in the draft real property master plan for Arlington National Cemetery, while supporting the stated vision, goals, and objectives. Finally, staff commends the plan's commitment to maintaining the mission and historic character of Arlington National Cemetery. This concludes my presentation. As I've incorporated all the recommendations into my presentation, I will not repeat them here. I'm here to answer any questions the Commission may have, and I am joined by Arlington National Cemetery's Colonel Thomas Alston and Agnes Sullivan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Do commissioners have any questions for Mr. Webb or the representatives? Hearing no questions, I will now open it up to the Commission for discussion. If the Commissioners would please turn on your cameras. I will start with Commissioner Wright and then go in a round robin format using our normal seating order. So please keep your webcams on during the discussion, and now we will go to Commissioner Wright.
You know, you're going to be shocked, but I don't have any comments or questions on this one. I was sorry to miss the field trip, so. So I don't, I confess to not having as deep an understanding as I did with the other projects, but I was around for 2015 and it all makes sense to me. I thought the EDR was pretty good.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
I support what the staff has presented and have no comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash.
I really appreciate the field trip out there helped to understand a lot of this. I think the EDR does a great job. I just want to emphasize with the transportation elements that were mentioned, the EDR to really work as we move forward with this on just better kind of pedestrian management to reduce those conflicts and not be too heavy-handed. Maybe we can come up with some better solutions. But overall, I think this is great. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ginsburg.
Thank you for the presentation. I don't have any comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart.
I also appreciate the presentation. Also, sorry that I missed the field trip. Appreciate the staff's work on this and no comments or questions.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I did want to say one thing, though I forgot. The piece about, I'm particularly a fan of the part of the EDR that talks about this mobile to make sure that the screening apparatus is not permanent. That's such a beautiful vista and putting, plunking that, plunking that stuff down on a permanent basis would really be a shame. So, and it can be done pretty easily to have removable equipment. So I just wanted to say that I'm really, I think that's super important.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner McMahon.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks to the staff again for a great report, great EDR. I second a couple of comments about Memorial Drive. I also want to take the time, since they're here today, to thank the staff from ANC who spent the morning with us with the threat of rain to take us around and give us a good visual of what they're trying to get to and what the cemetery looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May.
Yes, I have just a few comments. I do, I want to thank the staff for a very thorough report. And and it's, I mean, we do get, we do sort of expect these thorough investigations. And I think today, we've really, there've been several that have been very thorough. But I think in this one in particular, since it's of concern to the Park Service, I really wanted to make sure I said, thank you to the staff for the work on this report. I do appreciate also the particular attention that's been given to the concerns that the Park Service has already expressed to the cemetery, potential conflicts with our operations at Arlington House. The fact that certain actions will need our approval as they are currently envisioned, and so that means a lot of cooperation and collaboration as it moves forward. And in particular, visitor and pedestrian safety concerns in the vicinity of Arlington House. I just, I want to underscore that point. You know, we understand and appreciate the very important mission of Arlington National Cemetery. But the National Park Service has a mission as well, and it's easy when you have important things that you have to do to forget the needs of your neighbors. And we are a neighbor, we're an inholding essentially within Arlington National Cemetery. So we really want to make sure that the leadership of Arlington National Cemetery pays close attention to what our visitors will need, because frankly, our visitors and many cases are their visitors as well. So I think I would also want to underscore Commissioner Wright's comments about any sort of screening that could occur on Memorial Avenue. I mean, this has been an ongoing discussion for I know all the time that I've been at the Park Service and of course, up until 2020, Memorial Avenue was under our jurisdiction, and we're just, you know, we don't want to see that jumped up with crummy-looking equipment and bike rack, which is the material that Ms. Wright was referring to the Long Bridge Project, right, the portable bike rack kind of stuff. There are ways to do this well, and I think that there has to be some very strong attention on getting that right and keeping it as minimal as it possibly can be and still be safe. And then the last thing I want to mention is just to underscore again, one of the staff comments having to do with flex space just north of Memorial Avenue, where, you know, that's, those are, it was, it's a fully-designed landscape for Memorial Avenue with alleys or trees that line that area. And granted, many of those trees are not there now, but they should be replanted and that area should be restored. And I think that is an inherent conflict with the aspirations to make that some sort of flex space. I just don't see how that can work. But we'll see what comes in future development of this master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Argo.
I don't have any additional comments. I'd like to align with those from Commissioner May. And, yeah, and also underscore the fact that flex space always makes me nervous. Just in terms of, you know, what the parameters of that really entail. No, I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. I believe that is everyone, and I would just like to say, I want to thank the leadership at the cemetery for coming in early with this plan. It seems like there are a lot of positive improvements, especially for visitors as they experience the Welcome Center and start their visit to the cemetery. It's a really important entry point. I also want to thank you for providing the Commission with a great field trip. I regret I was unable to attend, but I did hear from those who attended that it was really very helpful to see all the nuances of the plan and understand the issues that you're trying to resolve as you move forward. I also want to underscore the previous comments about the visitor screening on Memorial Avenue, and thank you for taking this under consideration to have the least amount of impact on that vista and just the function of that screening process. We look forward to seeing the next submission. And with that, I would ask if there's a motion to approve comments on the Arlington National Cemetery's draft master plan.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Mann. Is there a second?
Second.
And Ms. Custer, can you please confirm the motion in the second and take the vote by roll call?
Certainly. The motion was made by Commissioner McMahon. The second was by Commissioner Wright. And with that, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Chair White?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg? And then Ms. Commissioner Ginsburg? I will note her is not present. I believe with that, the motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Custer. The next item, 6D, is a request to approve comments on concept plans for the Fort Belvoir North Area Distribution Center. Mr. Hart is here to present the staff report, so welcome, Mr. Hart.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes.
I didn't interrupt.
Commissioner May?
Moment, yeah. I was hoping to.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hands. Excuse me.
Traced it. I was trying not to disturb your rhythm. Anyway, given where we are in the run of the day, I was just going to make a suggestion that perhaps we might bypass the presentation and go straight to discussion. I don't think there are a whole lot of questions about this. I'd be ready to move its approval even if the rest of the Commission would be so willing. But of course, if people do want to hear the presentation, I'm fine with that, too.
Well, I think because it was on the agenda and there may be people who were looking forward to seeing this who don't sit on the Commission, I would prefer if people can hang in there to go ahead and have the presentation.
Fine, fine by me. I just thought I would make the suggestion. Thank you.
I appreciate that. So why don't we move forward and maybe we'll go through the presentation at a little faster clip? So, thank you.
Thank you, Chair White, and good afternoon, Chair White and members of the Commission. Hopefully you all can see the presentation and hear me.
Yes.
Yes.
The Department of the Army has submitted concept site and building plans for a new distribution center at the Fort Belvoir North Area in Fairfax County, Virginia. You may recall that this project was identified in the Fort Belvoir North Area Area Development Plan, which the Commission approved in March of this year. And I'll note that you received a revised EDR on this project, and this was really so staff could add in some information regarding the nature, scope, and recommendations for a proposed perimeter fence that is part of the project. And those changes are on pages three and seven of the EDR, and they should be either highlighted or underlined in it. So to orient you, the FBNA, the Fort Belvoir North Area, as it is known, is a 804-acre campus located northwest of the main Fort Belvoir installation in Virginia. West of the installation is the Fairfax County Parkway, west and south of the installation, and then to the east of the FBNA is Interstate 95. During concert review, the Commission should be focused on issues such as, is the project consistent with the conference and plan and other NCPC plans? Is the project consistent with the installation master plan? Is it appropriate for the site and are there particular unique and/or complex issues? And I'll cover these topics throughout the presentation. We'll first briefly summarize the existing conditions, then move to the proposal, and then end with staff analysis and content recommendations. So this is a closer look at the installation. In addition to the National Geospatial Intelligence Agency Headquarters, which is shown here in the middle of the slide, there are also existing development, some other existing development at the FBNA, which includes the Child Development Center and Fire Station on the northeastern portion of the installation, and then the Remote Inspection Facility, which is located southwest of the NGA. I'll also point out that Agate Creek, which is highlighted here by sex to campus, and there are stream valleys that continue off of Agate Creek to the east and west of it. Before we get to the proposal, I thought it would be helpful to see the three developable areas for the FBNA that were identified in the recently approved ADP. Areas A and D included future development projects in the master plan. Area D was location of a new distribution center, which is the project that is before you today. And I'll note that while a distribution center was mentioned in the ADP for Area D, the specific site location and building massing were not described within the master plan. So here's the proposed distribution center facility. It is a 525,000 square foot facility that consists of the elements that you see here. There are, there is a high bay warehouse, which is circled here in the middle of the screen, a three-story administration building. A three story administration building, which is northeast of that. Storage warehouse area. A entry control facility, a vehicle maintenance facility, storage buildings and a utility yard. In addition, there are two parking lots that are located just north of the building of the main building here. The main building will have solar panels for a portion of the roof and the other portion of the roof will have will be a green roof. And I'll note that the parking areas also have silver canopies on top of them. The the parking consists of four hundred and fifty spaces and the parking ratio for this part of the installation is one to one point five. And there are four hundred personal vehicle spaces and fifty government vehicle spaces. This is a rendering helping to show where the facility is in a little bit more detail. With that entry control facility here closest to us, this view is actually looking towards the west. And you'll see the the main warehouse building with the admin building to the top of the slide here. The commission action on the ADP provided guidance on several topics, including environmental impacts, energy efficiency, transportation. And further coordination with Fairfax County for the entire campus. Staff found this proposal complies with some of these recommendations regarding seeking early consultation with NCPC staff. Completing a survey of the of existing trees, incorporating and providing alternative environmental compensation measures early in the in the design process. And continuing coordination with Fairfax County. Staff also found additional information is necessary to to address the commission's action regarding prioritization of off and onsite tree replanting. Locating the facility on previously disturbed land to the greatest extent possible. And providing quantitative data demonstrating how the alternative environmental compensation will be equal to the loss of trees on the site. This presentation will describe what information the army provided with this submission and additional information that that staff needs to help to understand the proposal better. After reviewing the submission materials, staff supports certain elements of this project. Namely, the the high bay warehouse and the three story admin building. The vehicle maintenance facility, as well as the coverage, storage and the utility yard. We support these these items because they are generally generally within the twenty-six acre boundary identified in the recently approved ADP. Because its size doesn't allow it to be located in areas A or B from the ADP. And it has been decided not to disturb onsite wetlands or or stream valleys. You can see that the the wetlands are identified here. There's there's one to the north and then there are two that are located here south of the building. The stream valleys are the the purple areas with the streams being the blue. Staff's main concern with the distribution center proposal is because of the amount of tree removal that's proposed. In area D has increased. It was twenty-six acres in the final ADP that you approved in March and it's nearly forty acres as described here. Although the army didn't provide a tree removal and protection plan, they did provide a tree stand delineation plan and a map showing where trees would be removed. They've also provided the Fort Belvoir Tree Removal and Protection Policy, which is applicable to the to this project. It's identified here on the first bullet. They note that the Agate Lake will be an offsite area to receive some of the trees that that will be removed. Which is a result of the continued coordination between the army and Fairfax County. Unfortunately, they didn't describe how many trees would be planted at at Agate Lake. And that's the information that we were we'd like to understand. In addition, some of the trees will be needed to to be removed because of the perimeter fence, which I'll discuss in an upcoming slide. And you can see the fence line here, this kind of reddish. Line that's that's shown here. In order to understand the added impacts on forested areas, staff overlay the new plan on the area D outline. And just so so that you're understanding this, the blue dotted line is the new plan, what's proposed now. The purple line that's shown here is what was the the delineation for the area D in the ADP. The new outline shown is shown here is is helpful and I'll. Switch to a black and white image so that you can see where the areas are that are additional tree removal. And it appears the difference is a result of a few things being larger than anticipated. The parking area to the north as well as the main area, entry area to the east. In addition, there's the the alignment of the perimeter fence. Therefore, staff requests the army to reevaluate how more trees can be preserved. Either by reducing the size and configuration of the parking lots, interior roads and building footprints. So next we get to the perimeter fence impacts on forested areas. The perimeter fence project itself includes a sixty thirty foot wide swath with a ten foot pathway within it. It also includes lighting and monitoring devices along the the fence line. The perimeter fence was not described in the ADP and as I noted, it includes the removal of trees. It does cross a few streams and there are potential impacts to. We haven't received much information on this fence and are and are unsure why this alignment, which has environmental impacts is is necessary. We, while we haven't received this information, we are requesting the army to provide additional information regarding why it is needed in an already secure campus. The number of trees that will be removed for the fence and how will the fence proposal will be altered to reduce the amount of tree loss and impacts to streams and and wetlands. As there are significant numbers of trees being removed and there are limited areas to plant your trees on the campus. The army noted it would provide alternative environmental compensation for to offset the loss of the trees. These measures include locations offsite to replant trees at a two to one ratio. Consideration of solar and or wind power generation installations on and off post. The implementation of stream restoration on Fort Belvoir. And or stream restoration mitigation, excuse me, and or stormwater restoration and or mitigation measures throughout the post. The staff notes the army has committed as part of the final ADP in March to alternative. And environmental compensation measures to mitigate tree loss because of the future development at the FBNA. However, it's unclear how much of the proposed solar panels are are a mitigation for the tree loss. As no information was provided describing the tree removal and replacement plan. Staff recommends the commission request the army to submit a tree replacement plan, a requirement for the commission's preliminary review that addresses the following. The the number of trees removed and how the replacement ratio of two to one tree for every tree removed. Will be met on on and off site with a priority for onsite planting. Identification of onsite preservation areas and areas for replanting. And then finally, an analysis that demonstrates how additional environmental compensation measures equal to the loss of trees will equal the loss of trees removed. The final ADP indicated that new facilities are intended to support onsite renewable energy production and installation. And the installation should consider that that the installation should consider during the project review stage. The army noted the proposed distribution center will include solar panels on the building rooftop. Green roofs on other portions of the rooftop, solar canopies over the surface parking spaces. As well as eight percent of the parking spaces will be equipped with electrical vehicle charging stations. Under the current proposals, new facilities would be constructed to a standard of lead silver. And staff supports this designation as we find the army is prioritizing renewable energy by incorporating the. The. Alternative and the environmental compensation measures that I've already described. Staff acknowledges the applicant has provided some limited information regarding stormwater management. You see the stormwater management plan here. However, staff notes there is insufficient information to understand how the project will address stormwater management beyond it providing some onsite low grade storage. And finally, there are four hundred and fifty parking spaces proposed for the distribution centers, six hundred employees and government vehicles. The ADP, however, identified the number of distribution center employees at six hundred and fifty. And the amount of parking for the facility was between four hundred and thirty-six and three hundred and ninety spaces, which were both which were for the near term and long term. This would equal a parking ratio of either one to one point five in the near term or one to one to seven, excuse me, one to one point seven in the long term. And as this proposal includes six hundred employees and two hundred new employee parking spaces. The proposed facility would have a parking ratio of one to one point five. It is unclear to staff how the installation will achieve a one to two parking ratio. Given this proposal will have a parking ratio that is less than that. And then while staff understands that there may be that parking may be necessary here. As it's located far from the existing development at the FBNA. The entire installation will still need to meet the one to two long term parking ratio goal as described and approved in the master plan. And staff also reminds the army, the commission's March approval requested the army to return in two years with an update to the TMP. To demonstrate, among other things, how the TDM strategies. Will help the installation achieve a one to two parking ratio goal in the long term. And with that, it is the executive director's recommendation that the commission support the following elements of the distribution center complex. The highway warehouse, the three story administration building, the truck maintenance refueling building. Covered enclosed storage buildings and the utility yard. And to first defer support for the two service parking lots with the four hundred and fifty spaces. The entry control facility and the perimeter fence until additional information is submitted for review. As I've already incorporated the rest of the recommendations to my presentation, I won't repeat them here. I'm available for any questions as are representatives from Fort Belvoir. This concludes my presentation and I'd have to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions for Mr. Hart or the applicants? Hearing none, I will now open it up to the commission for discussion. If everyone would turn on their cameras and keep them on during the deliberation. I will start with Commissioner McMahon and then go in round robin format. So first, Commissioner McMahon.
Okay, thanks. I actually do have one question. Do we have the applicant here today?
They, yeah, they should be. Yes, we're here. So I think it's probably Dr. Dr. Bellamy. Yes, hi, how are you?
Yeah, good afternoon. So just one question for Dr. Bellamy or and then probably one question for Ms. I'll start Ms. Hart first. Looking at the the TMP and the those requirements and the way the brief is put together. Is the intention from the commission staff, is that the area D of the of north area is going to be handled separately? Or is that part of an overall TMP for Fort Belvoir North Area?
It's it's fun. It's in a way separate because its functionality is very different from the campus core. You know, the campus core is is administrative nature. The distribution center is legitimately that. It is a distribution center with with very different transportation requirements than than the campus core. But we're we're more than willing to increase that information as the design progresses. And along with the information on the the two parking lots, those are intended to be. Light handed to to speak to to earlier. So there isn't a lot of earth moving that has to happen and but we're we're more than happy to continue to provide your information as the design progresses.
Okay, now be part of your your next, your TMP, part of your master plan we've committed to meet in two years. Okay. I really have no other comments on the plan itself. I think the recommendations are solid and I think there is time in this project for Fort Belvoir to respond to them. Before they move forward and come see us again.
Thank you, Commissioner May.
Yeah, I I don't have a lot to add. I think the the EDR sums up the major concerns and I just would want to underscore. The the issues with regard to tree removal and the perimeter fence development, how that will be. I would also just want to mention, I mean, there was one perspective rendering toward the end. Which showed an overall view of the facility and it's a lot of roads and a lot of grass and some pancake buildings. And and really, that's not great. And I think, you know, they could be a little bit more creative in how they treat the landscape at the very least. You still need to have all that road and you still need to have those large flat buildings. Then, you know, something other than grass because grass is not the most sustainable thing. I mean, it's cheap and it's easy. And I understand there there may be benefits from a security perspective and things like that, but you know, could you be thinking about meadow plantings or other things that might support support pollinators? I mean, they're just, there's, it can be a little bit more creative with that. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Argo.
I appreciate the opportunity to see this and I I don't have additional comments. I think that. You know, the anything that we can, you know, anything that they can do to keep keep that parking ratio. You know, to 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 keep that rate parking ratio where we've asked them to keep it. Making sure that they have that they have that incorporated tightly into their plans. I appreciate it. I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright.
Oh, yeah, I I had a, it was kind of a question. I'm almost afraid to ask it. But I'm gonna go ahead. Carlton, you said something about a thirty foot swath for at the perimeter fence. And is that a requirement and how come? A swath of what?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it basically what we've been told is that it's a thirty foot wide area that they need clear. And a ten foot wide pathway within that. So it's around the fence. Basically, it's it's for the fence.
So so they need it clear for construction or for visibility for security reasons after the perimeter fence is in?
My understanding is it is for after the the security is in just for visibility.
Visibility. Okay, so which brings me to Mr. May's comment, which I second about the grass. There's a lot of stuff you can do that won't interfere with sightlines. Might even discourage. What's the word? Trans. Not aggressing. What's, you know what I mean, crossing it. Thank you. That's a good word, Carlton. I'm tired. So so the so I think anything but grass would cut down on your maintenance, would not would would not. Interfere with with your sightlines and would also just be prettier. And not to mention, yes, the pollinators, you know, the bees would love you. And and it would just be cut down on a lot of greenhouse gas from cutting all that grass.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Dixon.
I'm happy with what I've heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash.
No additional comments. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Ginsburg. Think Mr. Ginsburg probably had to leave.
Has Commissioner Gerns, yeah, yes, Commissioner Ginsburg has had to leave the meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart.
No additional comments. Appreciate the presentation and the EDR report. Very well done.
Thank you. Well, if I could add, you know, we recognize it's a difficult project to cite. A distribution center is large, has a big footprint. We know it's a necessary function. So I I do want to just echo the comments about the impact to the trees that it will be an extensive impact. And I really want to stress how important it is to continue working as you have. To think about replacement and other environmental mitigation. In addition to seeing if the footprint is as small as it can be, taking to heart Commissioner May's. Comments about creativity, there there's a lot of interesting work going on in the private sector with distribution centers and green roofs and. You know, I just I would welcome an exploration of those ideas to mitigate the impact. And it will be very helpful for us to hear more information on why the perimeter fence is needed. The environmental impacts related to its construction, particularly the impact on the creeks. And I know you'll be supplying that to us. I do appreciate the amount of solar energy that you have included in the project. And I'm glad that, again, you're coordinating with the county on tree replacement. So we look forward to hearing more information when you come back about all of those aspects. So with that, is there a motion to approve comments on concept plans for the Fort Belvoir North Area Distribution Center?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Argo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Ms. Custer, can you please confirm the motion in the second and take the vote by roll call?
Certainly, the motion was made by Commissioner Argo, seconded by Commissioner Dixon. And with that, Commissioner Co- Certainly, the motion was made by Commissioner Argo, seconded by Commissioner Dixon. And with that, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is carried. So the the last item on our agenda is an information presentation on the new Smithsonian Museum Site Evaluation Study. And today we'll be hearing from Mr. Fliss. Welcome back.
Wait, thank you. Good afternoon again. Make sure I can. Hopefully you can see that.
Uh, we can, but we also see all of the.
The frame.
There it goes. Yeah, it's good.
That's great. Thank you. So the purpose of today's information presentation is to provide an update on the Smithsonian Institution Site Evaluation Study for two new museums. Uh, the National Museum of the American Latino and the American Women's History Museum. Uh, this study will cover both museums and is occurring concurrently. Um, you saw a introduction to this process back in December twenty twenty-one. Um, followed by an update and an overview of the candidate sites in March. So just as a reminder, the legislation establishes that the Smithsonian Board of Regents should identify sites by December of twenty twenty-two. Um, the legislation also requires that the Board of Regents consult with, among others, the Chair of N C P C. So N C P C has an advisory role in this effort. Um, generally in the past, and with the most recent museum, the Chair has provided letters with recommendations and comments to the Board of Regents. Um, we do expect that the Smithsonian will return to the Commission for final briefing in September of this year. Um, with some additional analysis, which they'll talk about a little bit later. And then, of course, following site selection, N C P C pursuant to the Planning Act will have a review authority over the site and building plans for the museums. So I mentioned in March, you saw fourteen Tier One sites. These have been identified from the original twenty-six sites. Uh, you saw previously, the Smithsonian has identified four focus sites of those, three, which you saw previously, and one new site. Uh, which they'll talk a little bit about in further detail today. Um, so with that as background, I'm going to turn it over to Ron Cortez, Undersecretary for Administration with the Smithsonian. Uh, who will provide some remarks and introduce the rest of their team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fliss, and good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. As Mr. Fliss mentioned, we are here today for what will be the third of four briefings to your Commission. As our evaluation of sites progresses, we appreciate your including us on your packed agenda today. As you can see on the agenda, we will provide the following. Museum updates, an update on our site evaluation process, and discuss next steps with you. And we're very anxious to receive feedback and comments that we can incorporate into the process. And as Mr. Fliss mentioned, we will plan to be back here in September to respond to questions and feedback that you have from us here today. So with this, I will go ahead and. Turn this over. So before we provide an update on our evaluation study, I would like to briefly introduce our museum directors. Uh, who we're very proud of, who will update you on some of our recent activities. Uh, first of all, we have Lisa Sasaki, our interim director of the Smithsonian American Women's History Museum. And Jorge Zamanio, recently hired, who joined the Smithsonian in May. As the Director of the National Museum of the American Latino from his previous position. As Director and CEO of the History Miami Museum, and he will say a few words. First, I'd like to introduce Lisa Sasaki.
Lisa. Thank you very much, Ron. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. I've been honored to be working on the building of the foundations of the new Smithsonian American Women's History Museum. Which will amplify the accomplishment of American women, the history they've made, and that made them and the communities that they represent. The museum is committed to chronicling the millions of stories that exist throughout our past and present so that they can educate and inspire future generations. One of the most significant first steps that has happened since I was asked to serve as interim director. Has been has been to work with the museum's Advisory Council in developing their recommendations to Smithsonian Regents. Surrounding the selection of a site depicted here on the next slide. Uh, is a photo of the Women's History Museum councils when they visited potential sites on March thirtieth. Uh, the National Museum of the American Latino and the Smithsonian Board of Regents have also toured the sites this spring. I'm not going to take up too much time because I know you have had a very long day. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to my colleague Jorge Zamanio, so you can say a few words about the National Museum of the American Latino.
Thank you, Lisa. And good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. I look forward to working with you over the next many years and the realization of a new museum. I'm honored to join the Smithsonian team and take on this incredible opportunity. Uh, two weeks ago, I joined the leadership of the Smithsonian, the National Museum of the American Latino. The Molina family and the first lady of the United States, Dr. Jill Biden. In opening the Molina Family Latino Gallery at the National Museum of American History. This gallery is the first iteration of the National Museum of the American Latino. And provides a preview of the Latino museum's potential and helps visitors envision the future museum. The Molina Family Latino Gallery's inaugural exhibition, Presente, A Latino History of the United States. Introduces critical concepts, moments, and biographies that shine light on the historical and cultural legacy of U.S. Latinos and Latinos. Um, I would like not to turn it back to Ron Cortez. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jorge. Next slide. We would like to update you on our progress and evaluate the potential sites for the two museums. Uh, it's been a very thorough process and one in which we take great pride in taking feedback into the process. The next slide. As you recall at our March meeting, we shared that our initial due diligence had characterized the twenty-six sites into our list of Tier One sites. Those with greater potential for a new museum and Tier Two sites, those with limited or no potential for a new museum. Following the meeting, one additional site was added for consideration and evaluation. Site tours, since then, site tours have been conducted with the Smithsonian Board of Regents. The Smithsonian American Women's History Museum Council and the National Museum of the American Latino Board. In addition, we've held numerous outreach meetings. Uh, to members of different congressional staff and the Women's Caucus, Congressional Caucus. And a number of other stakeholder groups. In addition, we focused on qualitative feedback and quantitative feedback. We conducted a national survey, which generated input, representative input from across the country. Uh, from the public regarding the Smithsonian's site evaluation process. Next slide. We are currently conducting the following steps. Uh, we're reaching out to leadership of agencies with jurisdictions over the sites to discuss acquisition potential for each. We're analyzing a smaller group of focus sites in greater depth, which I'll describe later in this presentation. We're refining the planning level programs for use, enassing studies, and cost studies to inform site evaluations. In other words, going into further detail into the analysis of these focus sites. We're developing more detailed cost estimate for each of the sites. And we plan to return to N C P C in September to share our massing studies, cost analysis, and responses to your feedback today. And based on those fully developed evaluations, we would anticipate receiving formal written comments and on the site selection from N C P C. As well as many others named in the enabling legislation. Prior to our submission of the final site recommendations to the Smithsonian Regents in October. Next slide. This map illustrates where we started our evaluation process with a long list of sites drawn from those studied by the two commissions that developed the Presidential and Congressional Commission reports. That preceded the enabling legislation. Earlier in the process, we added two sites located beyond the map for consideration, Walter Reed and Berry Farms. And as Mr. Flitz mentioned, we, since we last met with this group, we added an additional site, the Title Basin Site, which was brought to our attention. Uh, by a member of the public. I would like to now introduce Luann Green, President of Air Saint Chris, who will present an overview. Of the evaluation criteria which we're using to evaluate the slides. Next slide. Luann?
Great, thanks, Ron. We can go ahead to the next slide. There are six high-level criteria that we're using to help understand each of the sites. Each of the high-level criteria also has defined sub-criteria. And those sub-criteria are weighted to reflect critical, important, or desirable characteristics. Next slide. As an example, here is, here are the sub-criteria for the location. Uh, they are proximity to the National Mall, is the site one near or off the mall? Prominence of site location, how visible is the site, significance to constituent groups. Visitation potential and proximity to the other Smithsonian museums and other active areas on the mall. Preservation of key views and sightlines, of course. Uh, next slide. As the sites are analyzed against the criteria, the results are summarized. This is an example of an early summary for the Arts and Industries Building, one of the four. Uh, this chart is a living document. It's updated to reflect ongoing input from stakeholders. Our tours were amazing, the survey work, all of the work we're doing, as well as further analysis of the sites. Uh, next slide. So we have gathered quite a bit of data on many sites. Uh, that analysis was instrumental in identifying the Tier One sites that Ron mentioned earlier. So Ron, I'll turn it back to you to pick up from there.
Great, thank you. So much, Luann, for that overview. Uh, next slide. Uh, excuse me, next slide. So these slides, sites include three of the four sites named in the enabling legislation. The Smithsonian Arts and Industry Building, the Northwest Capital Site. The Southwest Monument Site, opposite of the National Museum of African-American History and Cultural Museum. Plus the additional site at the Title Basin. One thing was clear in hearing feedback from our stakeholders and from the. Uh, and the surveys, that it was the interest of both of the museums to be located on the mall, which was definitely one of our. You know, one of our influential factor in us developing these focus sites. And to be clear, we did not eliminate any sites. We're just continuing to focus our efforts in. A greater detail in the remaining sites that are left. So it's more of a focused analysis in which we described earlier, in which we're going to be continuing doing. Massing studies, cost studies, and additional analysis on these sites. Next slide. The Arts and Industry Building is one of the first of the focus sites and is the only site under the Smithsonian's jurisdiction. And one is, we're looking very closely at its capacity to house a new museum. It has enormous advantages in its central location and is one of Washington DC's most distinctive historic buildings. His exterior restoration was completed within the past ten years. It's also on the National Mall. It was listed in the enabling legislation for the National Museum of the American Latino. Its unique historic character also brings several opportunities for development. Next slide. The Northwest Capitol is also one of the second of our focus site. The Northwest Capitol is in the enabling legislation for both of the museums. It's part of the U.S. Capitol grounds under the jurisdiction of the architect of the Capitol. We are looking more closely at this site's capacity to accommodate a new museum. Although on the edge of the mall's public museum campus, the site along Pennsylvania Avenue, as well as being on the mall, is prominent. And the site could accommodate a museum at its east end. Like other sites in the mall, this site has challenges, including its location in the floodplain and the Capitol's need for physical security measures. Next slide. The third of our four focus sites is the South Monument Site, which enjoys a prominent location near the Washington Monument. And across the mall from the National Museum of the African-American History and Culture. It was identified as a site for consideration, a label enabling legislation for both museums. The site is on the National Mall, although it is in the reserve, the no build zone that includes a central portion of the mall formed by its major cross-axis. The site is one of the smaller sites into consideration. And we understand that it must conform to the McMillan Commission's setback line. Next slide. The fourth of our focus sites is the Title Basin Site, which enjoys a similar prominent location, the proximity of the Washington Monument. And to the west of the Holocaust Museum. It is in the reserve. Our analysis has suggested building in the vicinity of the current rugby field to avoid the floodplain and the more sensitive cherry tree landscapes to its south. Next slide. Those were the four focus sites and we're, we're continuing to develop our analysis. And I'll quickly just describe the survey. Uh, since we last met with you, we completed a national survey to help us refine our site selection criteria and its weighting. We also wanted to get, you know, uh, farther outreach of input into the process. So those who were surveyed included panels composed of those to reflect the national demographics. That was one pool that we surveyed. We also did. An outreach variety of group, which was mainly stakeholders in the current National Museum of the American Latino efforts. And the Smithsonian Women's American History Museum efforts as well. So a more focused group with them. Uh, not much difference in the responses from between those interested in the Women's History Museum and the National American Latino Museum. Although there was a difference in that the American Latino respondents had more affinity for festivals and performances. Bilingual signs, parks, and youth and family-friendly space outside of the building, outside of the museum. Next slide. Next slide. Well, the, uh, one last thing I was going to point out, go back to the previous slide. I'm sorry, skip one. There we go. Uh, one thing is that we did. Asking the questions how receptive they were to either a new building or renovated building. Many of the respondents were open to having a renovated building, but were needed to have more information before committing. Which we felt was positive for feedback for some of our thoughts regarding the A I B building. Next slide. As far as the next steps, of course, we're very pleased to be here today. We have a busy summer ahead of us with. Uh, getting feedback and getting our final analysis drafted. Next slide. We will plan to be back, as mentioned earlier, to the N C P C in September, prior to our final briefings. In the next few months, we'll continue our discussions with site owners to understand their concerns and. Address their feedback. We'll be addressing feedback from external stakeholders, including outreach to solicit comments from. Agencies and individuals identified in the legislation. We will further develop our architectural programs, site evaluation, massing studies, cost studies, and business studies. And finally, as I mentioned, we'll return to N C P C in September. Next slide. That concludes our presentation for today. We're very happy to take questions. I'm now going to turn it over to Ann Trobridge and others from the Smithsonian Institution. We're here to assist any questions or comments that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. And if there's any doubt who should answer a question, I will direct it to a member of our team.
Well, thank you, Mr. Fliss, Undersecretary Cortez, Director Zamanio, Director Sasaki, Ms. Green, and Ms. Trobridge. We really appreciate all of you being here with us today and hanging in there with us to this hour. So do any of the commissioners have questions? I see that Commissioner May has raised his hand. So Commissioner May.
Yeah. So my question, the basic, and you note this in the presentation, that two of the sites are located within the reserve and the language and the authorization for the museums states pretty clearly that the museums shall not be located within the reserve. So is there some, are you planning some sort of congressional strategy? Because it seems difficult to get from where we are right now to a selection by the end of December as required under the authorization. So I'm just curious what your plans are with regard to that kind of outreach.
Yeah, I think, very good question. I think our first approach was to address the feedback that we received from the stakeholders, which they were definitely interested in being on the mall themselves. And so we clearly looked at those particular sites that were located on the mall. We also looked at which sites were occupied and which were vacant. And we're continuing to develop our analysis in that regard. We clearly understand that the enabling legislation for the museums asked us to look, you know, at the South Monument Site, which is both, which is actually in the reserve, so a little bit of conflict there. And we believe that going through this process will help us develop and be able to convey what those complexities are to others as we move forward. So I think this is, I appreciate the comments, really part of the process as we believe in going forward.
Okay, so I didn't hear you mention the word Congress in there. So at this moment, you're just building up toward something that may eventually involve going to Congress? Because, you know, it does say shall give consideration to the South Monument Site, which is, you know, giving consideration is not very specific, but shall not be located within the reserve is. So it seems pretty clear that there'd have to be some sort of legislation. And certainly that would be the case for the Title Basin Site, which is not one that was to be given consideration. I don't mean to press the point, I just, I was hoping to learn a little bit more about your broader strategy in that regard.
Yeah, I think the way I would answer that is that this is a transparent process in that we haven't really jumped to that part yet. We were in the evaluation, analysis phase. Then the next part of this, as I mentioned earlier, is that outreach into the different agencies who oversee these particular pieces of property and have that discussion with them. So that's sort of the phase we're sort of in now. And I know we did have just initial, you know, alerting of the agencies that we were considering, but not really a discussion. And really now, this is the time for the discussion. But we felt that having this information available to them, which I know some people have talked about, we need to have massing studies, which we are nearly complete and doing, that we can have a better discussion. So that's sort of the part that we're in right now.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I still think you're in a bit of a pickle, given the timing of what's required for the selection, but we don't need to go into the details.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We'll note that as I convey this information back, too. Thank you.
Right, and I know that you've had some conversations already with our secretary. And of course, I'm representing the Department of the Interior here, not really the Park Service. But this, I know you've had contact with Secretary and the Secretary's Office, and we have been discussing this and discussing it with our lawyers as well. So, you know, we're happy to start having those more concrete conversations as soon as you are ready.
Perfect. I appreciate that outreach, and we'll be reaching out to you very shortly because we pretty much have all the information, I think, will provide a good discussion. And that's all part of the process, so we appreciate that.
Great, okay, thank you. I will have comments when we get to that stage, but that's it for my questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Any other questions for the team? Commissioner Cash?
One quick question. Does the legislation specify whether it has to be in space that is owned by Smithsonian? Or could it be like a long-term 100-year lease or something like that of like an existing building?
Let's have, and, and can you answer that, or?
Um, yes, Commissioner Cash, the legislation does specify that if an agency agrees to transfer a site, they will send a letter to seven congressional committee leadership members, the House and Senate, saying that they're willing to transfer. And to me, transfer means transferring jurisdiction rather than leasing. However, you know, if a situation arose through these conversations that Ron is talking about, I'm sure there could be some other agreement with another federal agency that we could consider and they could consider and go back to Congress about.
And what's the current relationship, or I guess, who owns the Postal Museum? Is that actually the Postal Service and you all have that kind of an arrangement? Or do you own half of the building?
We have an agreement, it's not exactly a lease, because I'm not sure we'd pay much rent, if any, but we have an agreement with the Postal Service. And I think there are some others involved in the ownership of that building.
Okay, I'll, a couple other comments, I just wanted to tee it up with those questions, so thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Anyone else with questions for the team?
Yes, I have a question. Yep, I, this is not an easy one to answer, but I still want to know, how much of a role did resistance play in your decision matrix?
Resistance in the terms of sustainability and recovery from?
No, no, political resistance.
Political resistance.
Yes. I mean, so each site has a constituency.
Yes.
And I just, I just wanted to know how much that was considered.
Yeah, I would say that we're, it's really the other way. And the fact that we really heard strongly that people want to be located on the mall itself. And then we have this metric of different factors, you know, that's been developed by Air Saint Cross. And that's sort of how we've pushed this forward, with the weighting of location being stronger than some of the others.
I ask because it's shaping up like a spreadsheet exercise. And I'm not sure that that's the most reflective of reality. And I'll just leave that right there. I think there's some, there's some, there's, the matrix all makes sense. I asked some questions as we were going along. For example, how much, how much attention would be paid to recent or investment in certain properties that the federal government has made? I, I'm a little concerned that some of these sort of soft, subjective factors that are, in the end, very pragmatic might not have been weighted as heavily as they should have been. And I'll leave it at that for right now. It's a worry.
Okay, thank you. I'll reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Are there any other questions before we go to discussion? Hearing none. I will now open it up to the commission for discussion. If everyone would please turn on your cameras. I will start with Commissioner Ginsburg is not with us. I'll start with Commissioner Cozart and then go in round robin format using our normal seating order. So if you would please keep your webcams on, and let's begin with Commissioner Cozart.
I just, I don't have any real comments, just want, just appreciate the presentation and understanding what are some of the dynamics that you're trying to balance and look forward to continued coordination with the district as appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner May.
Did you mean to skip over Commissioner McMahon?
I did not. I have you out of order. But Commissioner McMahon, I'm so sorry.
We're all flexible here. No, thanks for the presentation. I've got no questions or comments.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner May.
Yes, I do have a few comments. So I will note for everyone's benefit that there will be a consultation with the National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission on July 27. That's also pursuant to the authorizing legislation, that there be consultation with the Chair of Nick Mac, which is the role that I play with that commission. And I would look forward to hearing that presentation. And I appreciate the fact that the Smithsonian is willing to present to the entire commission there because it's not, that was not really what was required. But I appreciate your having that full discussion so we can take advantage of the insights of all the members of the National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission. And of course, we noted already, the further consultation that will happen with the Department of the Interior. I will note that, you know, putting aside even the question of the reserve, if any National Park Service site is selected, because it involves a discretionary decision on the part of the secretary, it will require compliance with NEPA. I think this is something I mentioned the last time around as well, and I'm a Smithsonian of that. But it's just a reminder, and that's another reason why this, the timing of this, again, no matter what site is selected, if it's a park service site outside the reserve even, we would have that complication and the time that it takes. So the, I am a little curious. I mean, I appreciate the fact that what you are showing us are focus sites. Those are the four that are the most desirable because of their location on the mall. And I'm encouraged to hear that you actually suggested that no site has truly been eliminated. Because one of my suggestions would have been to make sure that you have some backup sites. Because if you are attempting to get something done before the end of the year, that may be the only way that you can do that would be to select some of these other sites or one of these other sites. Now, of course, it is possible that you could select the Arts and Industries Building and the Northwest Capital Site, and then the Park Service and the Reserve issues would go away. But I imagine you might have some challenges, at the very least, with the Northwest Capital Site. Because I know that that's been a site that's been coveted by many groups for many purposes over the years. And it has been very difficult to get, to approve something going there. I, you know, I would recommend, if you can do this for the sake of your transparent process, that you actually begin to include what you think are the other shortlisted alternatives. I believe that, I mean, I know you started out with a very large number. We were down to, I don't know, a dozen or so last time around. I expect that some of those have fallen out for technical reasons. But it might be worthwhile, you know, stating what the backup sites are for the purposes, again, of transparency and keeping folks informed. Because I have to say that when the announcement came out that these are the focus sites, it sort of shocked quite a few people, including the people in my agency and my department. The, I would also say, this is not, I'm sure this point has been made to you already in other ways. But thinking about museums and the future of museums in Washington, I think it is very important to be thinking beyond the National Mall. Because there is, there's just only so much real estate there. And in fact, at this point, I don't think there's any real estate that is actually on the mall that would be available for memorials, except, you know, other than the Arts and Industries Building and maybe the Northwest Capital Site. I mean, maybe you could go up into a little bit further to the west and be thinking about, you know, maybe there's, you know, space along Independence or something like that. But I think that the, not Independence Constitution, I'm thinking that the, you know, thinking more broadly about where the future expansion of the Smithsonian complex will go. Will it go up 10th Street? Or will it go, you know, will you develop a parallel row on Independence Avenue or something like that? Those are the important things that you should be considering because we already have one more museum that's gotten an authorization for, you know, further study and the Asian American Pacific Island, Asian Pacific Island Museum that will, you know, be evaluated. It may take 10 years, like it has for the Museum of the American Latino, to get to this stage. But, you know, in the scope of things in which we do work, right? Smithsonian is a, is not a young institution. National Park Service is not a young institution. We think in terms of forever, and I think you do too. So, you know, when we think in that kind of a time scale, where, what is the future hold for these important cultural institutions? So I think that that's, that's a bigger picture consideration that should be part of the thinking. And whether you actually will address it at this stage or not, but I hope you are thinking in those terms. And I just, excuse me, I want to repeat, you know, everyone wants to be on the mall. We face that all the time with memorials. And generally speaking, memorials are much smaller than the museums. But they are still substantial, and they can be substantial. And, you know, the Congress gave us guidance under the Commemorative Works Act to keep new memorials out of the reserve area and to require a higher threshold for memorials to come close within Area 1 as defined by the, by the Act. And I think that that sort of perspective should be embraced when it comes to new museums. In fact, if you read the Commemorative Works Act carefully, it actually prohibits new museums within Area 1. And Congress, you know, granted some flexibility here. But the, you know, we have to be thinking in a longer view. So, and all that being said, of course, we're very supportive of the mission of both museums and want to see them properly cited. We, you know, we're particularly interested in seeing some of the other sites brought back into the picture, if that's possible. So I think that's it for this. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if I'm allowed to talk, but great feedback. I wrote that down, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo.
I appreciate the very, what I think for the applicant were the most thoughtful and guiding comments that Commissioner May has just made. And I will leave it at that. I don't have anything to add to that. He's, you know, he's in a position to give them, the applicant, the kind of information that I think will be most useful to them as they proceed along this path. So appreciate that, Commissioner May, and I really don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Commissioner Wright.
I don't have much to add, other than I would, again, everyone here is familiar with the 3M Plan. I would second Mr. May's comments. As a member of Nick Mac, we see this all the time. Everybody wants to be on the mall. And so there has been a lot of work done to foresee the day that is, has arrived, where real estate is no longer available. And whether it's, and I totally appreciate the position that the Smithsonian is in, having two museums at once. You can hardly give one, select one mall, a mall site for one without selecting a mall site for the other. So it's a two-for-proposition. I totally see that because a firestorm would ensue if one made it to the mall and the other didn't. So I get that. But, but I can't help but refer again to the work that's been done to imagine this moment. And here we are. So I too would urge that backup sites be disclosed. Because I think, I also can say that, that at least in the, in the, at least among the people with whom I discussed this, this revelation that it was already down to four. We had thought it was at eight, and the press release was embargoed. And it was leaked anyway. I don't, I assume that it was leaked by somebody who didn't like the selections. I appreciate the position that, that, that the Smithsonian is in, but I can imagine um this, this final four being a list that's going to really be difficult to bring to fruition. So um, I would hope that, that some um, if there is a process for revisiting, that perhaps um we all keep an open mind.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Uh, Commissioner Dixon?
Uh, no comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash.
I thanks, uh, I know that it's late and I am the last one in line, but I just had to put some strong thoughts on the record. I worked in the Senate for ten years. The idea that there is a big chunk of green space adjacent to the Capitol is even under consideration for this is bananas to me. When the Senate has all these parking lots, there's one right there at North Capitol and E. If you're going to get anything from the Senate or the A, Architect Capitol, look at those kind of sites. We have Union Station right now, which is hemorrhaging any sort of tenants. Maybe there's some kind of partnership that could happen where we could get a museum space in there to clear out all these tenants and have a lot of traffic right next to another Smithsonian station, and we have all the, the new stuff that was going to be coming online over the next decade or so on the backside. Um, just some of the other creative things, I mean, Federal Triangle, I'm sitting right here in Federal Triangle right now in the Wilson Building. And I can tell you, I think that with the pandemic and new, looking at, at how people are going to be teleworking, there could be other opportunities, maybe looking at the FTC Building or other places, or, or maybe making some space available like we used to have in Department of Commerce with the aquarium. I feel, I know that the federal government is very stove piped and that there's, I don't own this, you own that. Um, but maybe just some more creative thinking about if we want to stay close to the mall, look at Federal Triangle and pick up some more leased space, because God knows the district has a lot of vacant office space right now, that I'm sure we'd happy for the feds to be able to tender into some leases with us. I mean, it also struck me that Bureau of Engraving and Printing, another project that we've been looking at, because they're moving to Maryland, that's a building right next to the mall. So I think my frustration when I saw this list, that none of these locations seem like the best that we could do, given the, the conditions right now and just all the other options, we could just be a little bit more creative. And I mean, I, I worked for the feds for many years. I can only imagine what, what Commissioner Wright and others go through all the time, but you all have a lot of stuff downtown, really close to the mall. And DC has a lot of stuff that we can offer that's farther away from the mall, maybe more convenient to a metro. So I would just echo um Commissioner May in saying that if there is going to be a congressional strategy, perhaps instead of going to Congress and asking if you can get on the reservation, maybe the best thing right now in the next uh uh however many more months before the December deadline, go to Congress and maybe try and get a little bit of extensions. I really think that maybe we need to look at this with some fresh eyes and not being under the gun or under some of the political pressure that others had mentioned. So I think if we rush this, it's possible we'll get it wrong. I know the sponsors of this legislation on the Hill want these things to move and want the sites selected to move their projects forward. I mean, this is the National Mall and, and downtown DC, and I think that if we're going to rush something, we're more likely to get it wrong. So I mean, I would just urge, if, if you all feel like you don't have enough good options or enough good time, go back to Congress and see if you can get another six months or another year so that we can get this right, and that, that we don't make a mistake that, that we can't correct on, on one of the most important pieces of real estate in the United States. So uh kind of event, kind of a suggestion, but uh thanks for listening and sorry for stretches that out on a few more minutes past six, but thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash, and I'm, I'm glad you didn't feel inhibited by time. I think this is a really important conversation, and um I appreciate all the commissioners being so passionate and thoughtful about how they view this uh site selection process, not just for these two museums, but for what comes next. Um, and I want to thank the Smithsonian for being here and for this briefing. It, it, it is really exciting to have these two new museums um underway and hearing today that President Biden has signed legislation for yet a third new museum. And as I mentioned in the previous information presentation, the American story on the mall is incomplete. Um, that's another, another way to look at this, and both of these new museums reflect populations that are significantly underrepresented, underrepresented in the commemorative landscape. Um, so we appreciate that um the advocates for these museums want to be on the mall. We understand that um motivation, and it sounds like you're continuing to make progress um narrowing in on the priorities for each of these museums. Um, the significance and the desire to locate on the National Mall is um is enormous. The pressure must be enormous, but um it does seem that while every site has its own uh complications, the Arts and Industries Building and the Northwest Capital Site could be viable contenders and have the benefit of being outside of the reserve, yet still on the mall. And I was really intrigued by Commissioner Cash's suggestion about the parking lots. And that's a very interesting question about what, what we could do to be creative. I'm also still intrigued by the Witten Building, which has um one of the most prominent locations on the mall. And I recognize that the building's use by Department of Agriculture is a complication, a big complication, but I do encourage further exploration of that site, just given its prominent location. And again, more museums, I am sure, will be coming your way as you consider these sites. And we'll reach a point where I think it has been said repeatedly, there simply won't be any sites left on the National Mall. But um, look at the Longfond Promenade and Independence Avenue as extensions of the mall. And of course, the Department of Energy sites across the street from the Smithsonian Castle could be very symbolic. But in, in terms of next steps, um I will work with our staff diligently to summarize the Commission's comments here today and send these comments to the Smithsonian for further consideration as part of our process. And um, you know, again, I, I ask everyone to think about representation. I think that's a very important consideration that the Smithsonian is working hard to address. So with that, I'd, I'd like to ask Diane Sullivan to give a quick overview of what we've heard today. And um, once Ms. Sullivan is finished, if the commissioners would um, you know, raise your hand and indicate if you think we've missed something in the, in the summary. So I'm going to put you on the spot, Ms. Sullivan. Uh, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair White, and actually you just did a pretty nice job summarizing a lot of the comments that we've heard. So I was just going to suggest that um I think we'll be organizing our comments around sort of three ideas. One, it's early in the process, um, and there's not a lot of planning analysis yet of the sites that we've seen. So um, we'll have more to say as a commission, I think, in September. And um, I know that we're asking for the analysis early so that uh staff and the commissioners can um can uh have time to digest it. Um, so hopefully that will be with us in early August. Um, but the overarching comment today um is that I think people are encouraged to hear that the other Tier One sites and even the sites before that have not been eliminated. Um, and there's strong encouragement to keep those on the table for, even if some of the four focus area sites don't work out, but also because there are going to be more museums in the future. And we have done numerous studies in the past. Um, we've worked with CFA and other stakeholder agencies, and there are wonderful places to go um off of the National Mall, but right nearby, Longfond Promenade, Independence Avenue. Um, and Commissioner Cash mentioned a bunch of ideas which we will capture. Um, but we have to think more creatively, uh, because we are going to be out of space at, at some point in the near future. And these are huge opportunities and should, could be thought of very well as extensions of the National Mall. They are so close and could be very powerful sites. So um, we'll go through the commissioner's comments and make sure that we capture everything that was said to that main point. Um, and then I think lastly, and this gets to some of um Commissioner May's remarks, is that there's still a lot of discussions that have to happen between uh the land holding agencies and the Smithsonian, and it sounds like a lot of that is going to be starting uh in the very near future this summer. So um, I think I will leave it at that, uh, but um if anybody wants to add anything. Um, but we did take copious notes here, so um we'll make sure to capture um just about everything that was said.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Uh, do any of the commissioners have comments?
I wouldn't ask that you specifically include Banneker, the Banneker overlooked sites. We spent an awful lot of time on the, on the um Tenth Street plan to, to not mention them specifically.
Yeah, will do.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Well, if there are no further comments or questions, a big thank you to Ms. Sullivan and to our Smithsonian colleagues and the staff.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is General Counsel. Uh, Mr. Cortez has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's hard to keep all the faces up. I'm sorry, Mr. Cortez, please.
Oh, thank you very much. I just wanted to provide a, a slight bit of clarification in the fact that I, I did mention that we have uh have not eliminated sites, but we have focus sites, but we do feel strongly about these uh four focus sites.
Thank you. That's an important clarification. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And now I have everyone's face on the screen. So um, does anyone else have any comments or questions before we conclude the meeting? Again, I, I just want to extend our thanks um for the presentation today and the very candid dialogue and the transparency in your answers is very much appreciated. You have a very tough task, and we look forward to working with you toward a conclusion. And with that, um, this concludes our open session agenda. We will not be meeting in August. Our next regular commission meeting will be on Thursday, September first, twenty twenty-two at one P M. And if there's no other business, the session is now adjourned, and I wish you all a very peaceful August. Thank you.